She wants to meet us in Atlanta.
Very good, thank you. And you got my pictures?
Participants today, so I'm gonna ask everybody except the board members to turn your video off. That's so Dan Trevino has fewer pictures to look at. And that includes staff. Dave, you can, David Gustine, you can stay on since you're the first person up after public comment. But then as, as people, as, and we'll use the raise hand feature when we get into the public comment parts. Or you can turn your video on and wave too, but again, the fewer pictures that Dan has to sort through, the better it will be.
Thank you.
I think in terms of board members, we're waiting for Betsy. Elliot was, did we lose Elliot or?
He's there, he's just not present.
Oh, okay. I see. Okay, I think we're waiting on Betsy Whitman. And still, we've got one more minute till five o'clock. Again, just ask folks, if you're not a member of the Board of Supervisors or actively speaking on an issue at the moment, please turn your video off. Again, that's just so Dan Trevino of the Board can monitor, we'll use the raise hand feature. For people who want to make comments, and again, just because we have so many people, if you're not actively speaking, turn your also, and that'll cut down on background noise, so.
We're still waiting for Betsy Whitman.
She just emailed me asking for the link, so I'm gonna send it to her.
Okay, she's trying to connect.
Betsy Dupree is not with us yet either.
Doug, I'm hearing music, background music from somebody who's not muted. I assume that's where it's from, I'm not.
Yeah, we asked folks, we have a lot of participants on today's for today's meeting, we're gonna ask that you mute your microphone if you're not actively participating right now, and also if you could turn your video off. Unless you're a member of the Board of Supervisors or somebody involved in an active discussion on the issue. Thank you.
Okay, well.
Here comes Betsy.
Oh, she's coming on, okay. There she is. Okay, it's after five o'clock, and I am calling this meeting of the Patent Township Board of Supervisors to order on May 12, 2021. Doug, would you just repeat your, your
Sure.
your request to everybody who's present?
You know, we have a lot of participants on this meeting today. We're gonna ask folks, if you're not a member of the Board of Supervisors or actively engaged in the conversation for the topic that's going on, to turn your video off, that's to a Dan Trevino who's the Board Chair. He's our moderator, he'll be he'll be asking you to chime in at the appropriate time, we're gonna use the raise hand feature. If you look along the bottom row of the Zoom, you should be able to find that. And then you'll be recognized when you're recognized to speak, you can turn on your video and turn on your audio. And everyone will have five minutes to speak, we will be using a timer. I do have a 30 seconds left sign, I can also bring it up on the screen. But we're gonna, everybody will be permitted five minutes to speak and ask that you respect that. Back to you, Dan.
Okay, thank you. First item of, on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the public comments. Mr. Mullen is here, let me ask if there any others, is there anybody else who's currently participating, who wishes to make a comment on something that's not on the, on tonight's agenda? And Mr. Mullen, I will call on you for second, let's see if there's any other public comments. If you're, wanna make a public comment now, you'll need to turn on your video and, and raise, use the raise your hand feature on Zoom. Okay, seeing no raised hands, okay, Mr. Mullen, would you please turn on your, your video and, and audio, and you are now you can now make your comment. Okay, Mr. Mullen does, did not respond, so he may, he may not be wanting to do that. So let's move on to the next item, number three, the CNET Annual Update. Cindy Han and Mr. Gustine, please. Go ahead.
Hi. Well, hi, good evening, thank you for allowing us this time, it sounds like you have a very full agenda. I'm Cindy Han, I'm the Director of CNET, I'm here with Dave Gustine, Patent Township's representative to the CNET Board of Directors. Dave is also serving currently on the CNET Executive Committee. So he is putting in quite a bit of time on, on the board, serving the township. Dave is gonna start off the presentation, I'm gonna share my screen and get us prepared here. Okay, Dave, you should be good to go there.
Okay, thank you Cindy. I'm gonna make just a few comments until Cindy takes over. But wanna go through 2020 highlights. There were some hybrid configurations over the course of the year. Because of the COVID pandemic, virtual and hybrid meetings provided for obvious audio and video challenges. Penn State University's response to COVID had tremendous impact on the internship program. All spring interns left March 11th in 2020. Only two interns served in the summer semester and the fall semester. 451 programs were produced by CNET staff in 2020. That represents a decrease of 6% from 2019. And then the university area joint authority became a full member of CNET. Other highlights, the franchise agreement between Comcast and the Center Area Cable Consortium was signed by Comcast in January of 2020. That agreement includes subscriber pass-through of 32 cents per subscriber per month for capital needs. CNET began receiving the quarterly beg fee payments in May of 2020. CNET1.org website underwent a refresh resulting in a cleaner design with easier access to online programs.
Okay.
I'll turn it over to you Cindy.
Thank you, thanks very much, I'm gonna go through this very quickly, folks. And I'll be happy to take any questions, of course, at the end. In 2020, the township sponsored a total of 38.25 programs. 22 of those for the supervisors, 11 more for Planning Commission. And then Patent Township always contributes toward the sponsorship of the Penn State Student Meteorology Programming. So that accounted for an additional 5.25 programs last year. There were also 55 bulletin board messages, most of those, of course, are agendas for your, your board and your Planning Commission meetings. We value those messages as 1/10 of a program. So those 55 messages would be valued as an additional 5.5 programs. So you do all the math combined, a total of 43.75 programs for the year. So for 2020, that amounted to just about 8.5% of all of the programming by all 16 of our member organizations. Very, very stable, you can see in 2019, that figure was 8.4%. So really not much change at all from, from year to year. This graph sort of shows you what your programming numbers look like over the past five years. And once again, there's not a whole lot of fluctuation from year to year with, with Patent Township. Um, if you look back over the last five-year period of time from 2016 through 2020, the township sponsored 8.38% of all of the programs by all of our member organizations. The previous five-year period of 2015 to 19, the, the percentage was a little lower, right, at 8.27%. And again, this five-year period is important to look at because those years, that five-year period, is what we use in order to determine your following year's financial contribution. So the 2016 through 2020 programming will be used to determine what the township's 2020 CNET dues will be. This chart sort of gives you a big view of all of our member organizations over the past five years. And I have that red arrow there pointing down to Patent Township's percentage at 8.38%. The largest user of our services, as has been the case for 30 years, is State College Borough with Center County Government in second place. As a reminder about how to watch, your, your supervisors' meetings are televised live on CNET Channel 7. They are streamed live on YouTube, and then they are rebroadcast Saturday at noon, Monday at 6:00 a.m., and Tuesday at midnight. Your Planning Commission member, excuse me, your Planning Commission meetings follow the same schedule but on alternate weeks, and Planning Commission is not televised live. Planning Commission, however, is streamed live on YouTube. On CNET1.org, both Channel 7 and 98 are live-streamed on the website. And the programs on demand, which are chaptered by Agenda Item, are kept online for a minimum of 12 months. We are also available on Roku, the set-top box, or the streaming stick. People simply need to search for peg.tv and look for our logo. And we are available on Apple TV on the set-top box, not Apple TV from your iPhones, unfortunately, but from the Apple TV set-top box. As many of you know, I am never able to give you any data regarding the number of people viewing your meetings on cable television. The cable companies consider that proprietary data. I am able, however, to give you some information about the online views. And so I broke this down for you with the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission meetings, both throughout the entire year of 2020. The board meetings received an average of 80 views per median, excuse me, per meeting with a median of 76. And in January of, of this year, January through April, the board meetings were a little more, a little more popular, an average number of 87.2 views with a median of 84. And you can see the Planning Commission numbers also increased from 2020 through in the first four months of 2021. In terms of what's, you know, in our future, we are now receiving the, the PEG fee funds which go toward really securing our capital purchases for at least the next 10 years. And that's very good news for our members because it has the effect of really stabilizing and helping to reduce your member financial contributions. We're looking at increasing the number of over-the-top platforms that we are on. Amazon Fire is another platform that is available to us. The board is looking at performing an update to our most recent strategic plan. And of course, we will be continuing to work through adjustments that are made necessary as we either return to in-person meetings or more organizations are looking at hybrids. And so we have, we have that going forward. So that really concludes my presentation, I have a final slide that gives you an idea of this is what 2020 looked like to, looked like to CNET, and I'm sure looks like to a lot of you. So, I will stop the share, if you would like, at this point. Okay. Thank you.
I like that, I like that comment, can you please put on your shirt?
Yeah, we've heard that.
Okay, board members, any questions or comments for Cindy or David?
Well done, sorry.
Well done, Betsy says, well done, I agree. Yeah, we thank you very much Cindy, you certainly have been a pleasure to work with, especially during the COVID challenges that we all faced in no longer being able to have in-person meetings. Pamela has her hand raised, go ahead Pam, unmute yourself.
Thank you, I just wanna say, you, you and your staff have done an excellent job. And continue to, your young people who continue to do and work with you, encourage them, they have done an extraordinary job, and you have too. So thank you.
Thank you very much, I will pass that on to the team, thanks.
Elliot?
Also like to thank Dave for his excellent representation of the township. And Cindy, to you for your excellent organizational skills of bringing all this together, it must be a real challenge.
There are certainly some challenges, just like, like everybody's experienced, but we, we appreciate the support of the township, Patent Township's been there from the beginning, so, so thank you so much for the continued support.
Okay, Anita, go ahead.
I add my thanks as well, I noticed in your report what a challenge it was with the universities going remote, that some of your students who normally would serve with you were not available, and you've done a Yemen job with limited student support, are you, hopefully? Are you hopeful that as the university returns to in-person learning that you'll be getting your regular levels of students back again?
Well, yeah, I mean, of course, we're, of course, we're very hopeful. We've actually accepted four interns for the summer. And and one of the reasons we've needed to do that, of course, is that as organizations decide to return to in-person, that does take more interns. So, you know, we need to to look at those staffing levels. And, you know, another motivation for us quite simply was, you know, we were also trying to function with, you know, the social distancing guidelines on how many people do you want to take, you know, for for a shoot? So it's been challenging all around. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well done.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I'm getting feedback from somebody on screen. All right. Let's move on. Thank you very much, Cindy and David. Move on. Number three on the agenda, presentations, public hearings. Three B, noise complaint, Green Hollow Park, pickleball courts. Let me just say at the outset, we know there there we have received many, many comments submitted to us in writing and also by phone, a few phone messages. I expect this part of the agenda will take quite a while to get through so that all the viewpoints can be made to the board. And I want to facilitate that by just making a couple of requests. When we get to citizens' comments, after we hear from a introduction from our manager Doug Erickson, I would request, we'll remind the citizens that you're allowed no more than five minutes of the floor to make your comments. And secondly, that I will recognize new speakers before I will recognize a repeat speaker. Meaning if somebody wants to make a response to something someone says, you basically, you have to wait in line until all the new speakers have their opportunity to address the board. And also, after a point, you know, a point has been made once or twice. I think it's very redundant for us to hear the same point made repetitively. And it actually does not help the case of the speaker to repeat points that other people have already made. So please be considerate in making your comments. And of course, not just considerate, but also civil. You know, we we want to hear every viewpoint that you have. And we want to keep it as a very civil discourse. So with those, with that preamble, let me turn it over to Doug Erickson. Go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Dan. This issue has been before the Recreation Advisory Committee. They heard the first complaints last year and have been looking at different options. But it got kicked up to the board here recently. So let me just go over the information that was provided. Again, we're gonna ask folks if you're not actively participating in the conversation to mute your microphone and turn off your video. Thank you. The information that we had, the initial request that came from Mr. Stephen Garcia, and he's going to speak here in a little bit. We also had with the initial agenda that went out last week, there were a few other emails. Mr. Mike, would you turn your video or turn your audio off? Go ahead. There's also some background information that the Recreation Advisory Committee had looked at. And then there was a list of mitigation or compromise options that had been offered in the past. On Tuesday, we had some additional information that came out. There was a list of frequently asked questions. Alex, can you put that up on the screen? Item three B five. Trying to compile all the questions that had been asked, you know. And then we had received a considerable number of comments that came in from May seventh to through May eleventh, and they were all included with that distribution that went out on Tuesday. In addition, there were four more resident comments that were received today, and they were all forwarded to the board. Couple at noon and a couple at four PM. In total, here at the township, we received approximately sixty comments, emails that came in. I had one phone message. So that is the, I had information that the board has all reviewed prior to this meeting. I just wanted to make a note to the board. There's no real need for the board to make, to find that the noise is unreasonable. The the board can use whatever basis they they would like to make a decision on this is issue. The noise ordinance is really not relevant in this issue. The board has the ability to determine that, I mean, if the board just says the noise is annoying and we want to do something, that's all the basis the board needs. So in that case, if we have questions about parking, Chief Jolly will address those. I think the last is, the last comments at the RAC made about the issue were included in the April twentieth meetings. I think that covers the background on the information. We do have Ms. Pam Salacangas with us. She's the Executive Director of Center Region Parks and Rec. And I'm gonna ask Pam if you just will come up and give us a couple of minutes some more regional background. Again, most people have seen the FAQ list. So they've got a lot of the background information. But if you can just give us more of a regional perspective, we'd appreciate that, Pam.
Sure thing. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. So thank you, Doug. Thank you, board, for a little bit of time today. I just have a couple of of things to add, as Doug indicated. Because there is, there was an inventory provided in the documents with the agenda packet. I just wanted to make a couple of notes to that agenda item. We have ten courts that are lined in the area for both pickleball and tennis. Those include a single park, single court at Daleview Park, a single court at Nittany Orchard, four courts, of course, at Burnell Road Park, one court at High Point, one court at Tussie View Park, and two courts at Suburban. So those are the courts that are dual-lined now. And those dual-lines were actually installed, I think, about a year approximately before I was hired. And so Center Region Parks and Recreation did hire a vendor to come in and stripe courts. We wanted to make sure there was courts available in each municipality. And at that time, I do believe the only other place that pickleball was being played was indoor at the YMCA. And so up until Green Hollow Courts became available through the renovation, for the most part, pickleball players were pretty pleased with being able to play on the dual courts. Now, I know that they were not perfect. We had received feedback as well from pickleballers. And just like any sport, the longer you're involved with the sport and the better your skills become, you know, you want to progress in your play. So you want to improve your equipment and you probably want to begin playing on a real pickleball court. And that's something that, of course, everybody understands. So up until Green Hollow, we did hear a lot about the net height. And I did see the comment about possibly being able to put the cranks back on to lower those nets. And we would have to work on some some arrangements for that to make sure that does get done after play. We are also seeing a resurgence of tennis. We've been very much in the bottom of the of a cycle with tennis in the area. For years, we were without a tennis instructor. The Community Tennis Association had changed over its members. And so right now, for the first time, and I think four years, three to four years, we've got two, if not three, new tennis instructors, people on waiting lists to take lessons in the community. So our agency is very much in support of trying to find some compromises through this process so that we don't eliminate any more tennis inventory, but could possibly create some additional pickleball inventory to try to balance out use. I have been to Green Hollow. It's very, very popular. We do know that pickleball courts are coming soon for the outdoor courts at the YMCA. That should take a little bit of burden off Green Hollow. But we're facing some of the same issues the residents are as we come to Green Hollow and other parks in the Park Forest area to do meetings. And our team is struggling to get our trucks and trailers and equipment into that park as well. So I wanted to be here tonight to answer any questions about pros, cons. I generated a list based on feedback I've received from the agency. It's very similar to what the Recreation Advisory Committee has put together. But I just wanted to say we're very much in favor of trying to find a balance that does work. Because I understand, as we support many sports in this community, we want to try to support this one as well and also reduce some of the effects the homeowners are seeing living next door to the park. Doug, I can, I can go on with our, some of our pro con that may come out in conversation.
I think that's fine, Pam. Thank you. I think unless, Dan, you have an objection, I think we'll, next we'll hear from Mr. Garcia. Stephen Garcia, who provided the initial recommendation to the board. He has a PowerPoint he wants to share. Again, we're gonna ask folks, if you're not familiar with Zoom, somewhere down along the bottom, there's a little icon that looks like a camera. If you click that, it turns your video off. If you're on an iPhone or an iPad somewhere, you can, I might have to search around. You click it again, it turns you on. But we're gonna ask folks, turn your, turn your video off if you're not currently speaking. And please mute there so we don't have background noise. And with that, are you, Mr. Garcia, are you ready to go?
I am. I appreciate it, Doug. And Pam, thanks for for that little bit, the detail that you provided. I appreciate everybody in the township for giving me an opportunity to speak. Doug, I don't know if I'll be able to present my slideshow. Would you, do you happen to have that PowerPoint available where you can flip through the pages for me?
Just, Alex, do you have it? Yep, there we go. Just say advance, please, and we'll move it ahead.
All right. I appreciate it. So again, I'm Stephen Garcia. I'm here with my wife. We moved here to Park Forest about, I guess, about two and a half years ago. I I relocated. I work for the Regulatory Office of Enforcement and Compliance with the U.S. Department of Transportation. My my wife runs her home office from here at home. My son is completely virtual when it comes to to school. So we're, we're home all the time. This image right here shows our house. From our door, from our actual house to the pickleball court is, it's, I put one fifty there. It's actually less than a hundred and fifty feet. As you can see, there's a number of other houses around here as well. There's actually studies out that show that the pickleball courts really shouldn't be closer than five or six hundred feet away from a house. That's to mitigate the cost that would be spent on acoustic barriers and having to do with homeowner complaints. A lot of the homeowners in this vicinity that you see right here and surrounding actually are on the same page as that I am with this, this issue with noise. It's, it's just become a drain on all of us. Right here is an image of Circleville Park. This was kind of something that really, really confused me as to why the pickleball courts weren't put here in Circleville. There's ample parking. As you can see, there's no houses whatsoever around here. This came to, to, you know, something that I really thought of because we were, I was at Circleville with my, my son for a scout meeting. And there were some kids playing pick, or tennis, and some of them both playing tennis. There's an open parking lot. You could not hear tennis whatsoever. But obviously, there's no one there to complain about the sound of pickleball. So I wasn't quite sure why pickleball wasn't relocated there. If you turn to the next page, here's Tudor Park, same situation, ample parking, accessible parking, no homes whatsoever. But again, you know, I'm not quite sure why the focus was to put it in Green, Green Hollow. This is actually from my deck. If you guys haven't already heard, this is just a thirty-second clip of what we have to deal with about, you know, it's upwards of twelve hours a day. Yeah, I'm not hearing anything, but I've got, it's playing, but I'm not hearing any noise whatsoever.
Maybe we can try running the video or the audio clip here after you're done here.
Okay. But for all of you that don't know, the sound of pickleball is kind of like listening to ping pong going on in the room next door to you. And we hear that with our windows and our doors closed for, again, like, you know, ten to twelve hours a day, depending on the weather.
Was that better or no?
No.
Anything. I don't know, but what else is hearing anything?
Okay. Could all hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, I heard it. My connection might be slow or something, but I did hear it. So this brings me to the Patent Township Code of Regulations, specifically one oh five, which is which, which is the applicable order. I don't need to read this word for word, but as you can see, the intent was to allow for each person in the community to be entitled to live in an environment where the noise level is advised for the community good. As you saw through my letter and and my complaints and the number of complaints that you received from the people living in this vicinity, people aren't really happy with the noise. When you look at unreasonable noise, the sound, volume, frequency, or pattern that prevents, disrupts, injures, or endangers the health, safety, welfare, comfort, or repose, which is i.e. a state of rest, sleep, or tranquility of a reasonable person. Yeah, so within the, within the township. So I mean, obviously, this is applicable and it's affecting me. And if you look at what is forbid, prohibited, it should be unlawful for a person to create, assist in creating, or own, lease, or occupy, you know, a kind of a property in which the activity is located. So that again, it kind of explains what an unreasonable noise is. Like Doug had said, you know, it's, 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 it's kind of up for the, the managers to come up with the, the idea if that is actually unreasonable. But right there, one oh five, I think it spells it out pretty clearly. This one, I've mentioned home value. This is something that really, really affected me. I had spoken to a Realtor just last week who had told me about how he had to do his due diligence and warn his customer about a house that was on Sierra Lane, which is around the corner from us, about the noise. Because it was his responsibility to warn his customer about the noise, and that customer was no longer interested in the house. There's actually studies out there that noisy, a noisy atmosphere does affect the value of a home. And there's studies that actually show that it can affect a home by twenty percent. We paid about three hundred thousand dollars for our house. That's sixty thousand dollars. Our home is our equity. It's, it's, it's huge to us. And to find out that if we wanted to sell our house, our home value was affected. I know that there were some other people within the, the surrounding community, surrounding park, who had said that they wanted to move. And in all honesty, we thought about it too, but we love this community and all. And all, and, and tell you the truth, if we were to have an open house and somebody to walk to, walk to the back of our, our house and heard the sound of pickleball, they would not want to buy this house. So, you know, that's something to keep in mind. There are a number of different studies out there that talk about the effects of the acoustics of pickleball. I don't need to read this to you, but you know, if you were just to do a simple search on Google, you'll see that there are a number of studies, a number of, of resources, a number of lawsuits, several communities that are going through issues with noise. And also safety. Safety is something that's a huge concern for a number of people within the community. There are a number of, of, of small children that like to use the park, but with the number of cars that are parked along the entrances to the park, it's just not safe. We've get cars that line the streets. There are sometimes cars that are parked the opposite direction. Sometimes cars that are parked three, three and a half feet away from the curb. It's dangerous and it's, it's an imminent hazard about to happen. And we need to make some type of, some type of, of, of fix to that. And I don't know what that'll be. This is going, I appreciate you turning the slide. This is a survey that was done at Green Hollow Park in regards to what the residents would be interested in, in having done with the park. This is back in 2000, back in 2016. It was something that was relayed to us multiple times when we had the initial complaints about the pickleball court last year. I did a request to get the actual summary of the result, the summary results of the survey. And also I wanted to get an idea of what the cost was to actually renovate the park. If you, you can see here, the, the survey was distributed to 336, or excuse me, 38 homes. Of the surveys that were returned, 70% of the, of, of the folks wanted to keep the pickleball courts, or excuse me, the tennis courts. Only 1% wanted to replace the courts and 14%, only 14% wanted pickleball. Which was, you know, that was kind of an eye opener to me. And, and you know, it was pretty upsetting as well, knowing that a number of the constituents that are taxpayers in this community really didn't get what they were hoping to out of the pickleball court. And that was at an expense of $82,000, which was also pretty interesting considering in the past two decades, only $70,000 has been spent on the entire park.
Let me interrupt, Mr. Garcia. Alex, are you keeping time of the, of the speakers? Amount of time speakers are.
Yeah, I am. I was not limiting Garcia since he was the applicant in this case.
Okay. I, I think we've actually exceeded five minutes for Mr. Garcia. Do you, can you wrap up very quickly?
I would have, yeah, sure. No problem. I appreciate it. On my last slide, I had no idea, but no 30 minute warning or anything. So, so my request. I, I'm requesting that the nets for the pickleball courts be removed to eliminate the sound of, as, as Pam had said, there's a number of other parks that are marked for pickleball. Put the, put some, some lower nets there. That, I, I think that's a simple remedy. It'll take care of the safety issue. It'll take care of the noise complaints. It'll also, you know, allow for people to still use the actual court. There's a number of other kids in the neighborhood to try using the court for other activities, but they've, you know, they, they haven't really felt comfortable doing so because they, they kind of, I, I'm not sure exactly to what context everything has happened, but some kids have not been.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Still not finished, sir.
No problem.
Again, okay. So the second part of my request that didn't make it onto the agenda, but I had actually made the request was I wanted to be provided reasoning as to why the decision.
Okay.
Decision was made.
We will, we will address that. We, we will address that. We will address that. So thank you very much.
I, I appreciate my time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I had to cut you short, but we have a lot of people I'm sure who wish to make comments. So. All right. For those, for other speakers, use the raise your hand feature. That Zoom has the Zoom raise your hand feature. And I will try to keep track of who's, you know, what the line is and who's raise your hand first and second and so forth. So first, remember, we're going to be timing you five minutes, hopefully less. But we want to hear every viewpoint. So Mr. Drew Von Tisch, you can go ahead and turn on your video and unmute yourself. Go ahead. You have five minutes.
Okay. Hopefully you can hear me. Okay.
Yes.
All right. I'm Drew Von Tisch. I live in Bolzberg. I've been a player of pickleball for over five years. I just wanted to let the board be aware of some statistics as well. There's actually 4.2 million pickleball players in the U.S. There's a 20% growth rate in the sport faster than any other sport. There are 10,000 places to play in the U.S. And I mean official pickleball locations, not modified tennis courts, which we'll talk about in a minute. And 100 are being added every month. Just yesterday, we had a class through Center Region Parks and Rec with 18 very satisfied pickleball players. My job, one of my jobs, in addition to teaching, was to educate them on where to park and how to park. What I found was four of, four or five of the 18 didn't have to park their cars because they walked to Green Hollow Park to learn how to play pickleball. They were neighbors that are nearby. After the course was over last night, someone found me and sent me an email, said, I was walking past Green Hollow Park and I heard pickleball. I really want to learn. And one of my friends who played volunteered to teach him as we speak. And that's how our community works. We welcome anyone who wants to play. It's open play. It is not a league. Anyone who wants to join us can. I want to make a, a, a clear point too about our population of players. We've grown from six to over 150 in just a few short years. And we are local. We are not outsiders. We have people who live in Park Forest. We have people who live in Patent Township. We also pay local taxes that go towards our parks and want to make use of them. In 2017, we met with many different local parks authorities because what we were looking for is official pickleball courts. It's really not adequate to line a tennis court and utilize it for pickleball. It's perfectly good for new players learning the game. It's perfectly good for practicing. But there are a number of big distinctions between a tennis court modified for pickleball and a pickleball court. I can talk about that separately. But what we were looking for in 2016 and 2017 was official pickleball courts. And fortunately, Patent Township roasted a challenge and gave us the only four official pickleball courts that we have. That's it. Those are the ones that we have to play on. We don't have another option for outside play on official pickleball courts. I'm asking the board to consider something very carefully in their analysis and their decision-making process. And that's to hold off on making any major changes until we see the effect of the five new courts that are being built at the Y. I'm a member of the Y. Most of our pickleball players are also Y members. So what you're going to see is a big gravitation of people to play at the Y that will lessen the burden and the number of people playing and the parking situation and all of the other issues will be reduced once the Y opens. And that is forecast to be by the end of June. Our group does our very best to be good neighbors. We invite anyone to come down and play with us. We want to play pickleball. We want to play it the right way. And just as an aside, we're offering classes all the time. Just in April, May, and June, close to 100 people will be learning how to play pickleball. So in, in order to stay current with this sport, we simply need more places to play. And what we need is official pickleball courts, not modified tennis courts. Like I mentioned, they're good for practice and they're good for beginners. But they're not good for regular pickleball play. So I appreciate the time. And I thank the board for considering this very carefully. I would just again, really reiterate, if we could hold off making any major changes or decisions till we see the effect of the five new courts being opened at the YMCA by the end of June. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Von Tisch. Okay, I'm ready to hear from other speakers, but I don't see any raised hands. Surely we have a few citizens here who wish to make.
Yeah, I'd like to speak. I'm not sure how to raise the hand though.
Okay, you're next. Go ahead, Lenny. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to offer some input. And, you know, I, I think I want to start by calling attention, there's one entry in the chat for today's session. I'm not sure if everyone has seen that. But it refers to a woman who's more than 90 years old, who is living in close proximity to the park. And I, I'm not speaking for her. I encourage all of you to take a look at that entry in the chat section. But she's delighted by the activity in the park. And that resonated with me. It resonated with me not just when I read it. It resonated with me in terms of my preferences. Now, Mr. Garcia talked about the negative impact or the potential negative impact of pickleball noise on, on his home belt. And I am of, I see it a little bit differently. When I first came to the Center Region, I owned a property that was adjacent to K Wood Park. My lot boundary bordered with K Wood Park. Now, the reason why that was important to me is because I enjoy the bustle of activity of people exercising and building a sense of community. And if that was something that I would have thought differently about, I would not have purchased that property. Now, in addition to that, after leaving, I moved into 1100 West Beaver Avenue where my backyard was less than 100 feet from the backstop of the playground at Coral Street Elementary School. Again, I sought that location because of the benefits. And I currently live within 100 yards of Graysdale Park. And again, sought that because I am of the persuasion that activity at a park builds community and it's good for you. I think that we should be applauding and celebrating and encouraging reasonable, respectful, and appropriate use of park facilities. That is very different from curtailing, limiting, or creating impediments to the use of those facilities. I would also say that I think that the number and quality of the recreational facilities available in the Center Region are one of the assets. And we collectively benefit from the increased value of our real estate because of those facilities. So I would, I would object to curtailing the use. I would love it if you would install pickleball courts at Graysdale Park. And I would be a proponent and helpful to make that happen. I had, I, to conclude, I just want to say that I did send an email message to Mr. Erickson and outlined some of the issues from the perspective that I see. I, I don't feel that I need to comment on those things. But I, I guess that I am grateful to the supervisors for keeping an open mind and I trust that you'll do the right thing and consider the overall interest of the overall community rather than the perspectives of a couple individuals who regard the activity as a nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next I see Megan Blair. Sure, go ahead, Megan Blair Simpson. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I don't, I don't want to repeat. I know some of these comments have been made in the letters that the board has received. I just wanted to, just in response to Lenny, I, I agree with so much of what he's saying about parks should be used. And they offer these great resources. And on behalf of myself and my family and many of my neighbors, we really miss our tennis courts. That's one of the reasons we moved into this neighborhood in Park Forest. So that's a huge loss in a way of life. And I live a number of streets away. And the pickleball sound is really a problem. I, I love that people are playing a sport. I just wanted to, that's all. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? Would like to address the board? Juliana Kay, go ahead. Unmute, unmute yourself, please.
Yep. Sorry. I'm just starting my video. Can y'all see me?
Yes.
Hi. Um, so I actually live in Park Forest. I live here with my fiance and all of our pets. And I didn't start playing pickleball until COVID. And those courts are actually a blessing to me. I was recovering from a knee surgery and had no gyms to go to. I had no way of getting exercise and those courts actually, and the people at those pickleball courts. So Drew, Lenny, Wayne Wall, all the people in here were the reason I was able to recover and get to the point that I'm at now. I also live in Park Forest. I live a few streets away. And I don't hear the pickleball courts. So I don't know what amplifying thing is going on in some people's homes, but I live a few houses away. Pickleball has been such a blessing in that I bring my friends who 20, I bring, we're 20 years old to 27 years old. We go out there, we play, we learn a new sport and we get to grow this sport and I get to learn more about our community and then get to meet more people in this community outside of my age group. So I'm 22, but I have friends who are over the age of 50. I have people who come to me if I like, come to me when I needed help and were there for me in times of need. So taking down those courts. Also, I live in this neighborhood and I use those courts as a means of exercise. So for me, I, I understand the tennis courts, but there are ample tennis courts within a stone's throw of here. There aren't ample pickleball courts. So unless I, I just for me, it's, I'm losing that opportunity. I'm losing that outreach, that community that I have felt with this pickleball community. If those courts were taken away from us, I would lose that. I know my fiance and I, he wrestles here at the university, but that is a way for him to meet other people and to meet people who have supported him and support us. And I just think it would be a real shame to lose that. I don't know if anybody can agree or disagree and I'm open to hear disagreements, but I just think that the community part of it should be taken into effect. I mean, I have kids running behind all around my house, shooting Nerf guns at each other, screaming and I don't go over there and tell them to stop having fun. It's a way for them to get outside and get to know people. So. Thank you for your time. Appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Okay, ready for the next speaker, Stephanie Cutler. Go ahead.
I, I am Stephen Garcia's neighbor and I really appreciate all the comments about how wonderful pickleball is and how great it is. And I love having the activity in this neighborhood and I love being able to walk around the neighborhood and see people, but I work from home mostly because of the pandemic. And, you know, as people have noted, pickleball is a growing sport. So there's now 120 people who are trying to use the four courts. And it is very regular and constant all day that you are getting pickleball noises that I can hear in every single room in my house. And if you can't hear it at your house, maybe it's because it doesn't travel all the way through my house to get to your house, but it does get into my house and into my head. And so spending time in my backyard, which I love because it backs up to the park and I can hear kids playing and I can hear lawnmowers going and I'm fine with those. But the constant popping of the pickleball makes it much less pleasant for me to be spending time in my. popping of the pickleball makes it much less pleasant for me to be spending time in my backyard and to be, you know, having a few friends over to the deck to have some outside social distancing and having pickleball going in the background. It, it's a lot. And it's not every once in a while, you know, it's, it's pretty consistent. And that's where I think some of the challenge comes in. And I wish you all the best of luck with your pickleballing. But I really wish there was another opportunity a little bit further away from some houses where it wasn't such a conflict to be there. Because, I mean, it, it's, it's just a lot. And I don't want anybody to lose that sort of outlet, but at the same time, it's a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ready for another speaker? You raise your, use the raise your hand feature if you're not familiar with that. If you would turn your video on and raise your hand and wave your hand around so I can see you, that's another option you can use right now. Steve Wistar, go ahead. Need to unmute yourself, sir. You're still muted, Steve.
Okay, there you go. Sorry. I do not live in Patton Township, so I feel like I only deserve two and a half minutes. So I'll keep it quick. I'm at the other extent, age range from Jules, who we just heard from, the young person. But we enjoy playing together. I'm, I'm one of the ones who organizes the play at Green Hollow. We, when we had to leave the YMCA fourteen months ago or so, I started an app, an email listing of afternoon players. We had about twenty people. And that has now grown to more than eighty people that play in our session that begins at one PM. Whether permitting, of course. But what I wanted just to share was, we've been through this pandemic. And it has been truly remarkable how much it has meant to me to have a place to play real pickleball and be able to advance my skills with other people who care about that as well. And just what good it has done me, you know, mentally, physically, emotionally and spiritually to be able to have a bunch, and make a bunch of new friends while playing this wonderful game. Just from the larger perspective of the community as a whole, the center region, has been an amazing blessing for me. And I'm so grateful that we've been able to do that. And, you know, I must laud Patton Township for creating, you know, you sort of build it and they will come. You built the very best possible pickleball facility that we had, at least before the YMCA is doing their thing. And, you know, we all have learned that that's the place to play the game correctly, to work on the subtleties, you know, where the height of the net does matter. And the game's going to keep growing. It's a great game for people in their sixties and seventies. It's not too stressful on the body. You can play almost every day and not, you know, break down and get injured. As opposed to a lot of other sports that I've played over the years. So I'm just really grateful that this exists. I, I'm also a noise sensitive person and I, I have empathy for the neighbors. And I hope that some years down the road, we have more courts to play on of this quality and that are more distant from houses. So I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I see a support on the video. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Okay. Tires.
Okay.
The stops.
No, okay. There was a gentleman from, on his iPhone, but he just left. Stephanie Garcia, go ahead, Stephen.
Hi, I'm, my name is Erin. I'm Stephen's wife.
Oh, I'm sorry, Erin Garcia.
Yeah, it began. Yeah, I just wanted to share kind of what we're, what I'm hearing, a lot of reiterations is that, you know, how great pickleball is. And no one's saying that pickleball's not a great game or that people don't love playing or that's not good for you. But these guys come and they play for a short amount of times and then they go home. But imagine going home and then hearing kids shooting Nerf guns at your window three times a minute for the rest of the day. Or somebody constantly throwing a tennis ball at your house while you're trying to work. That's kind of what we're dealing with. And I did share it in my letter, but I used to do yoga on my back deck. And I can't go out there and do any meditation or yoga anymore. So I actually lost the ability to do some of what I do for exercise. When the pickleballs were, pickleball courts were put in. Additionally, because I work from home, I'm also homeschooling our child this year. I work till late into the night and being able to sleep past eight in the morning is important for me to be able to function during the day. And so now I can no longer sleep in my bedroom because our window backs up to the pickleball courts. And you can hear it through our bedroom with the windows closed. So at eight o'clock in the morning, we're woken up to sounds of pickleball seven days a week. And oftentimes for ten to twelve hours a day, we listen to this. And I, that sounds like an exaggeration, but it's not because these groups come through throughout the course of the entire day. And we have very few breaks from the constant popping, which is approximately, when all, when there's like ten players out there, it's about thirty pops per minute for twelve hours a day we're listening to. So as some people have benefited from this, I've really been disadvantaged by the courts going in. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any other people wishing to speak? If you don't, aren't able to use the Zoom raise your hand feature, then you can certainly wave, wave at me, turn on your video and wave at me. Hold on, Lenny, you already had a chance to speak. Let's see if there are any new speakers. Anyone else? I don't see anyone. So go ahead, Lenny. Go, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, and I think I might have skimmed it on one of the handouts that you showed on the screen. But it seems to me that a reasonable kind of way to control the noise that might be bothersome for some is through some sort of acoustic fencing. And I know that the fence that encloses the courts is fairly worn. You know, it's in some cases, it's rusty and other cases, you know, there's like where the fence is bent. So at any rate, that might be a way, a solution that pleases both sides of the fence. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Jim Payne, go ahead, Jim.
Yes, just a couple of comments. I live at the corner of Sierra and Park. And even with all the leaves off the trees, I haven't heard the pickleball at all. Yet during the summer, even with leaves on the trees, I hear the ball games. So it doesn't bother me that much. About eighteen months ago, I bought pickleball paddles because of course we're right over there in Green Hollow. Then the pandemic came along. And I haven't done anything since. But now that things are easing up, I'll probably try and join in somewhere. I'm sure that the noise bothers people. But at the same time, it's a park that's paid for by all taxpayers. And it's meant to be enjoyed. And at the moment, being the only true pickleball courts in the center region, I don't think you should undo anything, at least until the Y opens back up. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, I'm kind of holding this session just for citizen comments and we'll go immediately after that into board comments. So if you can wait, let me, let me see if there are any other citizens who would like to speak. So again, if you want to speak, turn on your video and wave at me. Okay, I see Susan Smith. Go ahead, Susan.
Okay, I know you didn't want a bunch of repeats, but I guess that's what I'm going to do is just try to reiterate and ask for people's patience because there are lots of potentials for other part, or other courts and stuff. So, I mean, I know we're doing everything we can to be considerate of the neighbors, but there's only so much we can do. And so I guess we're just asking for the same consideration in return and ask for your patience until we can find a better solution. But to take down the nets just seems so drastic. The pandemic is ending. Summer is coming. I mean, people are going to get out and do things and enjoy the great outdoors. So I hope we can work this all out to keep everybody happy. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. And Anita, can, can your comment wait to, okay. Now, let's see. Wayne Wall, go ahead, Wayne. Turn on your video and unmute yourself.
All right, everyone see me and hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. My name is Wayne Wall. I moved here in fall of 2019. I'm in the Navy. I'm working at the university as an active duty Navy member. And I, I will tell you, one of the first things I did was I came here six months before looking for pickleball courts. You didn't have them. So I was kind of limited in what I, where I chose to live. And I will tell you that just as there are people who would be detracted from the pickleball noise, there are people like me who would buy a house next to a pickleball court because that is my passion. And I'll also tell you the economic impact of pickleball. I have played all across the United States. I think I've played in twenty-some states now. And the draw to a community for pickleball, it's a big economic impact. I can tell you, I have brought over thirty or forty people to come stay in hotels, eat at restaurants, take lessons and be a part of this. I can't bring more because you don't have more courts. If you add more courts, you could bring in two, three hundred thousand dollars a year easy in hosting tournaments as part of a community. And yes, it would be more courts, maybe more noise. But I will tell you that there's a lot you can do to mitigate the sound that that's not being done. And I, I also tell you that, please, as the board of directors, carefully read the Patton Township codes. Because there's also a portion in there about unreasonable noise and the time at which that unreasonable noise occurs. And I think you'll see that maybe Mr. Garcia left a little bit off of his presentation, maybe for emphasis or maybe just out of hindsight. But I will tell you that pickleball is a great thing across this United States. There are people who come to State College to play on those Green Hollow courts from all over the state. We've had people from as far away as Indiana come to State College to play on those pickleball courts. They're a draw. They're great. They, they enhance the health of our elderly population. And I think the real solution is not cutting those courts down. It's building more and more. I think the why, I think Burnell should be converted to pickleball courts. There's hardly any tennis. You may say there's a resurgence in tennis. But I play at Burnell, I play at Circleville, I play at Green Hollow. There's no resurgence that I'm seeing. The courts are never, I'm never waiting for someone to get done playing tennis so I can play pickleball at all of those courts. And I'll also tell you as someone who travels and plays in major tournaments, we just finished the US Open two weeks ago. Real pickleball is about real courts, not lying tennis courts. That's not what draws people here. It's real facilities and real courts that you can play on. And we have that. We have that right now. And if we had more, we could draw more people. With that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, looking for more people with their hands raised. If you want to make a comment, please turn on your video and wave at me. All right, I see no more hands raised. So now I'm going to ask the board members to, to speak to the issue. And Elliot, I am going to initiate a new concept here, and that is reverse alphabetical order. Those of us who are, whose last names start with a letter at the end of the alphabet have lived our whole lives being called on last. So tonight, those of you with your last names at the end of the alphabet, alphabet can speak first. So Betsy Whitman, please, you have the floor.
Well, since I was a blizzard for the first forty years, I would actually like to go last. So I'll defer to Ms. Rob.
Anita Tease, go ahead, Anita.
Or whatever.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank all the residents, all the citizens. The number of letters, which are also very thoughtful. Those of us who print them out at home, we have reviewed all of them. I'm hearing, and the task of supervisors is to listen to the residents. And I'm hearing those who are concerned about the noise, the, what I'm hearing, Mr. Garcia and others who are concerned about the noise, saying it's interrupting their sleep. You are woken up at eight AM. It's constant. It's interfering to your ability to sit on your outdoor patio. It's for some of you who work at home, it's even interfering in your own home. I also hear from the pickleball community, and I think there were amazing testimonials to what a difference the courts made, especially during the time of the pandemic, both for exercise and for, it sounds like, wonderful social support commit, community that you have developed. I'd like to say too, I'm seeing notes pop up in the chat. And I'm not able to read the notes as they go along. And I think I'd ask for Doug's, because sometimes the chat notes aren't shared in the whole public realm when, with the CNET broadcasting. So I would encourage those who are doing chat notes to actually speak on the video for the benefit of everyone to see and also for the CNET recording. I wanted to, Mr. Garcia raised some points and there are others on staff who can speak to that about why Circleville Park, the tennis courts there were not chosen. Circleville Park's tennis courts are not owned by Patton Township. They are owned by the school district. And I will let others speak to that. I know there have been discussions and maybe Pam Salakangas from the Park District can speak on that. But that, when you ask why the tennis courts in Circleville were not considered for pickleball courts, that's because they're not Patton Township courts. No, nor are the Two Deck Park courts. I love Two Deck Park and, but it's in our good neighbor Ferguson Township. And I would also speak, and I hope the staff could speak to that 2016 survey. Back in 2016, I didn't even know about pickleball. It's only been a friend who shared that with me, I think, in 2017, what it was about. I would, and I don't know how people chose to answer the survey questions, but I would bet that a lot of people didn't say they wanted pickleball, not because they were opposed to pickleball, but they simply hadn't heard of it. And now, as I understand, it's growing in knowledge and popularity. The one other aspect, and I saw a question in the chat about the parking situation on Park Forest Avenue.
Thank you. I'm so sad they can't listen to this.
And on the parking situation on Park Forest Avenue, and Doug, could I show my pictures now and my suggestion for parking up, options here? I would like to suggest, and because I've sensed the pickleball community has been very responsive to the requests that have been made of it. Very polite, very respectful, that, that if the pickleball community began to park at the other entrance to Green Hollow Park, which is the one along Sierra Lane there between Cornwall and Wiltshire. I live on Cornwall. I have for forty-six years. So I'm very familiar with Sierra on that stretch. And I had some other pictures. So this is, well, I can't, I'm tempted to use my finger. You can't do it. It's right below Park Interest. Here's a view of Sierra as you're heading one direction. And you can see there's, you know, a lot of space there. I think the sense of the park frontage there, it's probably a little bit longer than you'd find on Park Forest Avenue. And we park there and then you, there's a very nice paved entrance walkway that leads down into the park. I know there's another entrance off Sierra, but that is not paved and it's rather steep. This is looking the other way on Sierra. And I've walked that, I walk Sierra all the time. I walk my dog and I And I've walked that, I walk Sierra all the time. I walk my dog and I pick up. But I can attest that Sierra, the cars, you know, go on it, it does not get the traffic of Park Forest Avenue. And if the parking was one side only towards the park area, I think that could accommodate a number of cars and it would not create the traffic hazard. There are two homes on the other side of the street, but you wouldn't have concerns about children running between the cars. I would like to suggest whatever our decision going forward here is on the courts, especially if the courts continue, that the pickleballers park there. In fact, today, when Supervisor Whitman and I were visiting and we walked up that path, and there was someone who was coming to play pickleball who did park on Sierra right there. And I think that would alleviate many of the traffic concerns on Park Forest Avenue. It seemed that to us today, some of the folk who parked on Park Forest Avenue were children with families that were there in the park having picnics and other things. So those are my preliminary thoughts addressing some of the issues that have been raised. I would have more to say as the discussion goes on, but I wanted to offer that.
Thank you, Anita. Pam, do you have comments?
I just have a comment. I would like to hear from Pam. When they talked about the YMCA and the five courts, I'm curious, I would like to hear from Pam and her response and her feedback for the pros and the cons. I know we kind of shortened what she was getting ready to say to give our residents time to tell us what they were thinking, but it's time that we we hear from Pam, who is on the parks and recreations that we can get a professional input and feedback and information that might help our in our decision. Pam, if you don't mind?
Yes, thanks Pam. Thanks Anita. Just really quickly, I did put a comment in the chat screen. And basically, it was just reiterating what I had said earlier. There was a comment made about tennis. It is at a low point in our community, but our agency has been working very, very hard to bring tennis back. So that comment just simply stated that we have hired new instructors. Finally, we have tennis programs that have full enrollment with waiting lists for both youth and adult. So tennis is not on a surge right now, but it is just slowly starting to come out of that trough because tennis is very cyclical. And I would agree with Anita, something she said about the 2016 survey. I also moved here in sixteen and was living right off of Sierra at Green Hollow Park. And I remember getting that survey as a brand new resident and a brand new Parks and Rec director. And pickleball, while I knew about it, I would agree, was not really well known by the general community. And, you know, the local pickleballers have done great work to really grow. You know, they have visited the authority meetings. They've visited many of the recreation committee meetings to to grow this sport and and to make changes to the courts. Just to clarify as well, the State College Area School District does own the six courts and the soccer field that are adjacent to Circleville Park. That is not patent township land, as was stated. And I will give credit to Susan Wheeler. She has been in touch with the State College Area School District to explore again, dual lining there. And I know those are not going to be changed to pickleball courts, but they could offer more places to play, and maybe we could coordinate lower net needs. Pickleball could not, those courts could not be changed to pickleball pickleball because that is not a school sport at this time. But they would entertain possibly dual lining if that's something that our agency and Patent Township could work out and do that together. So we are, we, some of the mitigations that Susan and the Recreation Advisory Committee have on their list in the packet were also on the list that Jim Carpenter and I put together late today, right before the meeting, as a matter of fact. So we we were not part of the full decision making for those courts, but we knew very quickly after they were built that sound was going to be an issue. And when we go to Green Hollow Park for family fun nights and other events that we host there, the sound does carry. So we knew that the sound is different for pickleball than it is for tennis, that that may increase. And we began to hear from the we began to hear from the community and forwarded those comments on to Patent Township Rec Advisory Committee to review. So I think in our mitigation suggestions, we are suggesting that we relook at some of the sound barriers that could be installed on those courts as an option and possibly how to fund those. We are considering other mitigations, like some signage to encourage turnover at those courts, you know, much like a tennis court. You show up to play. If you've been there and there's a and there's a community waiting to play, it's it's basically customary for thirty minutes and you turn over that court to the next people. We have seen throughout the day with our staff being at that park, probably a hundred players coming in and out of that park throughout our stops there. And I mentioned earlier on the call, our staff is having difficulty accessing the park with our equipment. So I love the suggestion about possibly scooting over to Sierra Lane where we could park on Park Forest Avenue for access with our larger equipment. As long as we have access, that would be great. Other mitigations that we're looking at is some of the problems that we're having with the pickleball courts that we're receiving feedback at our office is we do have a commercial activities permit process for all of the municipal parks. And we do have some folks that are outrunning commercial for profit activities at the pickleball courts. And we're trying to get a handle on educating those folks that that needs to be a process that's approved through Center Region Parks and Rec to make sure that those courts are are not being utilized by one group. We've gotten a lot of complaints in the office that people actually don't get court time at Green Hollow. And so I really like the suggestion of possibly holding off just a bit. I know Drew's mentioned it and others have mentioned it here, to see how the wise courts impact use. But we may have to look at some other restrictions regarding hours for those courts. There, you know, an extreme suggestion is a rental policy for those courts where we can designate hours, try to mitigate. You know, the early bird players, maybe at seven or eight AM and all the way to the evening players in the summer because I can understand hearing that that sound all day throughout the day could be very, very distracting. So again, we're here to support. The other thing I'll throw out there is, I've mentioned this in several meetings with the Board of Supervisors here from Patton and the rest of the general forum, that we do have an opportunity in the near future to look at the master plans of our other regional parks where there are not communities so close by that maybe in the future, there could be something developed elsewhere as well that would supplement. I'm just a supporter of not reducing tennis court inventory at the moment. Just because we don't have access year round to the courts at Circleville and or the courts at Community Fields on Prospect Street in the Borough. Those are now really heavily used by the school district. And we're working on rebuilding that relationship where we would schedule those in the summertime. They are not dual lined. If the Circleville courts become dual lined, there would still be restrictions because you can't just drop in and play during the school day. And so we would need to learn to figure out how to communicate that to to our community. I think that's everything. Let me just check my pro con list. I do have it in front of me. I think the only other thing that I added to my list for tonight is if if the if there is a need, and I know Jim's on here, if there is a need to reline, I saw some complaints about the color of lines and that they can be confusing. And if there's a need to repaint those and change the color, maybe that's something we could work towards. If not this year, then next year through our operating budget. And then and that also work on a plan for the nets because there is a two inch about a two inch difference between tennis and pickleball. If that will help to spread people out while we figure out this this situation.
Thank you, Pam. I just want to also reiterate what Anita said to both our residents and to the pickleball members. We hear you. We listened. We researched this immensely. As we make our decision tonight, we thank you all for taking the time out to come to our meeting tonight. And I hope we can come to some reasonable solution to this. And that we hear you and we plan to hopefully work together so we can make the an answer for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, Pam. Elliot, you have the floor.
First of all, everybody I've heard tonight is, in my opinion, correct. Now, the problem, the problem is that not everybody's saying the same thing. And so that suggests that we need to get quickly a group of citizens and recreation people together to solve this problem quickly. Couple of ideas would be the some better sound barriers on the existing court until those are available. Second, what about the the new park that hasn't really been started yet off Whitehall Road? Maybe pickleball courts could be put there. At Burnell Road, I think we should make some dedicated pickleball courts because the sport's not going to go away. It's going to get larger. And so another place that has full regulation and proper courts would be very wise. I don't think we can shut down the existing one because it is a park and that's what the kind of thing you do in a park. I remember this is many years ago and many people will remember that we had to chase dinosaurs away when when this was the case. But when I was a Little League coach, we used to have Little League practices in the middle of Green Hollow Park. And I'm sure they weren't that quiet. We had twenty, thirty kids there and and we didn't have the parents yelling at that at that because those were just practices. That would happen later at the actual fields. But it wasn't a quiet thing and we didn't have any complaints. But then again, people expected to have that kind of noise. But this is a different kind of noise because if you're in there trying to concentrate and you hear this going on constantly, it's very soon becomes very irritating. So I understand that. Now, today, to make a I was trying to make a point here, though, that my Zoom background here happens to be a picture of the court area that I took just before noon today. And strangely enough, despite the fact that it seems like it's always being used, it was a bright sunny day and there was nobody there. I was there for about half an hour. So I don't know how that could possibly have happened. But in any case, I think we need to get a group together of people who want the courts to stay, who want the courts to leave immediately. And the people who are in charge of organizing it and of making it safe for everybody. And let's solve this problem. It shouldn't take that long. And we may need to get some more funds to put more facilities where they won't bother as many people, but can help a lot of people. But we can't stay where we are, and I don't think we can just shut them down.
Hey Elliot, Betsy Whitman, go ahead.
Thanks, I'm ready. So first, I first, I'd like to thank everybody who participated tonight and in watching and also in sending letters. And I would like to thank Elliot for his suggestions. A lot of them are ones that are very concrete suggestions, options to reduce the to get at this problem. It's someone said it's not the population is not going to go down. It's a a sport that has a lot of popularity. And so even if the Y opens, I can't imagine that any reduction in the playing at the Green Hollow Courts is going to, if it occurs, is going to last for long. I do a lot of organizing of events. I always worry about enough people not coming. And when I see an event where there are too many people that come where you have to make drastic changes in seating or availability, I say, this is a good problem to have. So I see the popularity of pickleball as an exciting thing. A number of pickleball players have already mentioned that. I do want to take a moment to address, however, the specific needs of and voices of those who do live next to the courts. And I want to address specifically comments that were made in some of the letters, didn't hear any here tonight, that cautioned against government, quote, bowing to the demands of a few people. And I I just want to make very clear that because we've heard from, and I'm going to name them, people this evening, Erin McGann, Steve Garcia, Megan Blair Simpson, Stephanie Cutler, who complained about the noise. And I had a long conversation today with Stephen Garcia. We need to respect that. I thank Pam Salakangas for talking at length about the mitigation. And I know you're familiar with the mitigation options. But I would like to remind people that the government operates to listen to all people. And I use very specific examples of the Americans with Disabilities Act. That's a very small voice of people and the government had to step in to make sure their rights were were addressed. And LGBTQA, I would also point to a deaf child area. So I please ask everyone in the pickleball community to respect the needs of individuals. And I I think that the voices here tonight have shown that respect. So I don't think this audience is is a problem there. I do also want to make a comment that about the real estate. I called a Realtor. I needed to tease a suggestion. I called the Realtor Brian Rader, who is on our planning commission. And he happened to know of a house on Sierra Lane that sold recently. It was listed at about 285 or 280. It sold for 335. And this is a house at 427 Sierra Lane. It looks like it's about 200 feet from the pickleball court, so not quite as close as that of Mr. Garcia's and Ms. McGann's, but fairly close. Not only sold for more than it was worth, it had eighteen offers. And I would like to also reference the comments of Mr. Wall by the way, we we it was your wife, I believe, Anita and I Supervisor Tease and I talked to today who parked on Sierra Lane. One person's trash is another person's treasure. One person's noise irritation is another person's noise soothing. So while I'm, I don't mean to say buyer beware to the people whose names I've just spoken. And by the way, I I also spoke with Alan and Margaret
Friedlander.
Friedlander, thank you, this afternoon, who live right next to Mr. Garcia and Ms. McGann, who also expressed some concern. They have not expressed as deep concern as Ms. McGann and Mr. Garcia. But we yeah, just need to give that consider. So they, oh, yes, sorry, I lost my train of thought. The choice was made to live next to a public park. I know that when everybody moved in, it was tennis courts, much different noise. I I heard pickleball today for the first time. Yes, it is. It's noisy. It's kind of like ping pong. It didn't bother me. One, why? Because one, I don't live there and have to live with it, you know, twelve hours a day if need be. I could walk away. Two, I was talking to a friend, so I'm not noticing it. But if you're working on a problem, you're working at home, something goes wrong, you're frustrated, of course, you hear the noise. So noise is relative. And I I think that is also, that's a part of the equation. But in in terms of concern about property values, I do not believe it's there. And there probably are never people like like Mr. Wall, who would jump at the opportunity to to move into a house. I'm not suggesting that any people who are upset with this move away. That is, that's a hardship that any move is difficult. So that's, those are my comments. And in addition, I would like to say that I agree with it's been mentioned a couple of times to wait until the end of June, I believe, until the courts at the Y open, that might alleviate a little bit while we can regroup and look at a two year, three year, four year plan down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Betsy. Anita, before I go to you next. Thank you, thank you, Betsy. Uh Anita, before uh I, I go to you next, uh let me just make, share some of my thoughts and then we'll go back around the board because I, I would like to get us a consensus from the board about uh moving forward on this issue. As far as Mr. Garcia's second point of his requests to know about the eighty-two thousand dollars uh that was spent to convert the, the old tennis court to pickleball. My understanding was that a- at that time, the, the, the old tennis courts were in pretty bad shape. And Doug, if, if you would like to tune in here and clarify, I'd appreciate that. And there was a need to do something a- about it. And uh I think at the time, because I was on the board and Elliot was too, and I think Betsy was too. I vaguely remember that when this issue came up, uh they had, that the sense was that the tennis courts were pretty underused uh at that, just at that time, you know, to and even though there are clearly, there were residents who, who used the courts, you know, you know, Park Forest residents who would come down and use the courts, uh the amount of use was very low. We had to spend money, we had to do something, the township had to do something because of the, the shape of the courts were, were really in bad shape. And I, I don't remember why uh or how the, the pick, converting to pi- pickleball, how that whole sequence of, of events happened. Uh but the point is that we, the township would have spent that much money regardless. The eighty thousand dollars, it would have been spent regardless, whether it had to be, you know, to uh to rejuvenate the tennis court or convert it to some other use uh that would probably be more popular. And you know, to our big surprise, it's become the most popular uh use of that, of that part. Wow, you know, what a problem. I, like Betsy says, I appreciate the nuisance that's, that the immediate neighbors are feeling a- about the popping noise, continuous popping noise uh from the players. And so yes, you know, that's something that we need to consider and mitigate in some way. I also feel like Betsy, that it's, it's little, it's premature today to make a hard and fast decision uh about saying, okay, we're going to take the nets down on one hand, or okay, uh let's, we're dismissing this complaint and we're allowing uh pickleball players to use the court as, as they're currently doing, you know, one, one or the other, those two extremes. I don't think uh that, that we, we're in that position yet. Uh personally, I would like to explore more about s- sound mitigation of the, of the Green Hollow Courts. Uh we know nothing about, we mean the supervisors, we have no figures, no financial figures, or what's it going to cost? You know, what are the financial, what are the options? And how much does each option cost? And how much sound mitigation uh we, we should be considering, you know, how high to make the, the fence, the, the noise suppression fence cover all four sides, cover the two sides closest to the houses. I mean, there are a bunch of options there that we ought to consider. As well as putting in new courts, you know, that now that putting in new courts somewhere else uh or converting a existing tennis court to pickleball court, that's not going to happen overnight. That's going to take, take a while, especially if you want to construct new courts and you want to al- alter the um uh you know, the existing park plans uh for, for parks that have already been constructed and parks to be constructed. Uh that all those parks a- already have plans. And so it's, it's, that part would take a, quite a while to implement as far as expanding it. But I know we all want to do that because of the popularity of the sport and it's still growing. It's not slowing down, it's still growing. So we, we need to uh satisfy the, that, that demand for that kind of recreation in our community. Uh so anyway, those are my, uh my views. Let's get Anita's comment here and then, then we'll come to some conclusion. Anita, go ahead.
I'll be brief. Yes, I too am supportive of waiting to see the impact of the YMCA courts, but I'm also sensitive to the number of comments that I read that people are being woken up at eight o'clock on a Saturday. On the one hand, I think, well, kudos to people who would get up to exercise at eight o'clock in the morning. But I'm wondering if on an interim basis, while we wait to see the impact of the YMCA courts, if there could be consideration of restricting some of the hours so that people can sleep until nine o'clock on weekends, or um that it wouldn't be a seven-day-a-week time that that noise is happening. I'm sensitive, Memorial Day is coming, people will want to have their friends over to the, their back porches. Um I'm hearing it's the constancy of the sound that is wearing people down. And I'm, I think perhaps, I don't know if the pickleball community could survey its members to identify the most reasonable times. I noticed on one of the comments, somebody really liked the lunch hour because they could walk over and play at lunchtime during the week. But I'm wondering if they're, on a temporary basis, if we could um look at um restricting some of the hours to give a breather of um silence to the folk who are feeling besieged by the sound in their houses.
Okay, um we need to wrap, wrap this up. Now, uh Elliot made a specific suggestion and that was to, to form a, an advisory group, uh just to deal with, you know, th- this issue and come up with uh options for the board to consider. How, I want to know if the rest of you feel that that's something we should implement. So if you do, raise your hand, say yes, I think Betsy says yes, Anita says yes, Elliot says yes. Pam?
I agree with the addition of what um Supervisor Tease just added. With some kind of time limit to be respectful to our residents that live there, especially on the weekends when you work uh five days a week and you have that Saturday that you can sleep at least by nine. Uh I think we should add with Elliot, I agree with E- Elliot one hundred percent, but we need some kind of time limit. Adding one to that, while we, while we research this.
So you're, you're suggesting uh a time constraint now while this group is meeting, uh until they come up with other options.
Well, the, the group should meet quickly and, and should uh come, it should only, only volunteer to be on it if you can agree that over a period of a few weeks, come up with some ideas that we can actually work on. Because these other, otherwise sometimes these committees just go on forever and nothing gets accomplished.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have another board meeting in two weeks, so uh certainly Doug, I think we should put this on the, the the agenda for that board meeting, that revisit this. Uh we have comments from Betsy and Anita, go ahead, Betsy.
I, I think Anita was first.
Oh, Anita, go ahead.
Okay, I guess she's telling me to go first.
No.
Yeah, let, uh, uh second what Anita and Pam said, let's just call them in, inter- interim restriction. So it could be time, we could also think about putting up a temporary sign somewhere or maybe on the pickleball courts that says, pickleball players, please park on Sierra Lane. Pickleball folks will, I know, get the word out there. But having this meeting with the idea of setting up these interim uh conditions that will make life a little more bearable wi- without compromising pickleball too much.
Okay, Anita, go ahead.
Yeah, I see there's a note in the chat from Mr. Garcia suggesting a ten-to-five time on Saturdays and I can't read the whole chat. Maybe Mr. Garcia would like to come on to speak to what would be an acceptable temporary time alteration.
Mr. Garcia, go ahead.
I was actually, you know, I was typing.
Erin, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying like um on the weekends, you know, ten, ten till five would allow us to either sleep in um or have dinner on our deck uh in quiet. So that it would be, you know, ten to five on the weekends would still allow for seven hours of play, at least until there's some mitigation done. I mean, I feel like that's, that's reasonable on the weekends.
Also, um last year Susan Wheeler had said that she was going to speak to the Pickleball Association about using equipment that was quieter. I, I don't know if anything has ever happened with that.
Uh I'm not, I don't know either, but uh I, I think the uh pickleball uh organizers are, are, are aware of, of that request. So again, I think this group that, that we're recommending be formed uh can explore all those options. And I would think that, that uh a representative from Center Region Parks and Rec should be part of that discussion because they, they, they're the ones that are managing uh all, all of the activities on, on all the parks anyway. Uh and are the professionals at it as well. So let's, I guess I'm going, I, I hear a, a census of forming this kind of a, of a group. And I think there could be time for one or, or maybe two meetings of this group uh before our board meeting in two weeks. Uh so that's one thing I think everyone on the board agreed to. And the second thing has to do with uh time restriction on play on weekends. And this, there was a suggestion to make uh playtime open on the court from ten AM to five PM on Saturday and Sunday, I presume, Saturday and Sunday. Uh do we have agreement on that from the board? Anita says yes, Betsy says yes, Pam says yes, Elliot. Okay, we all agree on that, so Pam?
What was the hours on that?
I'm sorry.
What, what were the hours for the?
Ten A, ten AM to five PM. So uh Pam Salakengas, I presume Center Region Parks and Rec can create some signs, or is that up to the township?
Uh we, we can do some temporary signs and then depending on what this group comes up with in the future, work with town township on permanent signage if that becomes something that.
Sure. So let's, uh the, the board, I don't think we need a motion because the board all unanimously agreed for that. Uh Doug, you have a question?
Any more guidance on the advisory group? Is it y'all come or how, how are decisions to be made? Majority vote.
Wow. Okay, first thing, membership. I suggest uh certainly uh Mr. Garcia or, or Erin McGann, e- one or the other should be on there. Uh Mr. Von Tisch should also be on there. Again, if these people agree, they're willing.
I, I, this is Stephen Garcia, I agree, I'll be on, I'll be on it.
Okay. Board members, supervisors, any other suggestions for membership? Oh, also from, someone from CRPR. Supervisors, any other suggestions?
Anita here, I think someone from the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Yeah, good idea, yeah. So we'd have to check with uh the membership of, of RAC uh to get a representative.
And maybe the gentleman and I forget the name, I've read so many letters, who'd been supervising the afternoon pickleball group. I don't know if he's on the Zoom right now, I can look up my letters. Oh, yes, thank you, I'm sorry, Steve, I couldn't.
Okay.
Memory glitch, yeah.
Okay, so there, that would be two, two representatives from pickleball organization players. We need another homeowner. I, I think Stephen shouldn't feel like he's compelled to shoulder the entire burden. Is there any other homeowner near our, the Pickleball Court who's online right now, who would like to be on this group? Uh we'll leave that up to, let me leave that up to Doug Erickson to uh recruit, you know, Mr. Garcia could also recruit somebody. So that, let's keep this group small, let's, let's encourage them to meet once or twice, it can do this by Zoom, obviously. And review rec- uh options and recommendations. And also Doug, I'd like to uh well, and Pam Salakengas, I'd like to get some uh finance, financial data, you know, concerning some estimates, concerning some of these uh sound mitigation options that could, that the group can also consider. Well, certainly the board would want to know that, I want to know that personally as far as uh possible financial things. And Pam, you have a comment or a question?
I also think somebody from the chief's office should be involved. Um a pl- one, at least one police officer should be um because they're the ones that we call when there is a complaint or noise. And I would like to have some im- other input on that from the outside.
Okay, Doug can contact Chief Jolly. And Doug?
The police have, have responded to a couple of complaints. They have found that the noise generated by the pickleball courts is not unreasonable.
Okay.
I see, the explanation, the explanation was it's a unreasonable sound or noise coming from a pickleball court because it's pickleball. The, the fact is, it's the park was put there. If you build it, they will come. It's, it's unreasonable for us because we have to listen to it. It's, it's not, I, I mean, I'm all for the pickleballers, you know, they, they enjoy their, their sport. I don't think that they're in any violation of, of any noise issue, it's the fact that the park, the courts are put where they are. And there's only a few of us that have homes that are right adjacent to the, to the courts. And we've become the sound barrier that the township didn't invest in. So we're the ones that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, yeah. Uh uh Betsy, you have a comment?
I would just like to suggest um a, a member of the group uh that you reach out to Alan and Margaret Friedlander.
Yes.
I had a, quite a good conversation with them. And then they were the ones who introduced me to Stephen Garcia.
Uh okay, now Doug asked a question about uh process in terms of voting and all that. I, I personally, I don't see this as, as a voting committee. I, I think this committee, what we're asking them for is to review, have a discussion between them directly about mitigation options or, you know, op- all options, not just mitigation, but all up options and, and trying to get uh the homeowners and the pickleball players to have a conversation with each other. And, and with a, with the goal of trying to find so, solutions, solutions uh to present to the board for our consideration. So I don't think it's necessary that there be a, that this co- committee comes to us with consensus, that can certainly be one-sided, uh I mean, have each side say, well, this is what we think uh would work and the other side can say, well, we think this other thing. Uh who had their hand up? Was Pam, is that your hand raised? Yes, go ahead, Pam.
Sorry, it's very light. Just a clarification, we would like to have these signs installed for this coming weekend. Could you verify that?
Yes, I think that's the board intention, it's something we can do right away.
Yep.
Uh Anita, go ahead.
And just before we leave the discussion, are the pickleball representatives on this Zoom, are they comfortable talking to their members about parking at the other entrance to Green Hollow Park on Sierra Lane to relieve the congestion on Park Forest Avenue?
Okay, Steve, can you respond? Okay, Steve, can you respond? Go ahead. Yes. And Wayne, Wayne Wald and Drew Von Tisch both raise their hands saying yes. Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
That's settled.
I'm sorry, that wasn't a yes. To make sure everyone understands that it's not just pickleball players who park there. So we will, we will tell the pickleball players, but it's not just going to be pickleball players.
Okay, we got that. Thank you. Drew, did you want to make a comment as well? Drew Von Tisch? No? Okay. Uh, all right, uh, I'm going to take the prerogative here of wrapping this up. We are going to ask the, the volunteers on that committee to come back and to address this board in two weeks. At our meeting in two weeks. Doug, what date is that?
May 26.
Wednesday, May 26, 5 o'clock PM. It will be on the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for your input. Uh, thank you for keeping it very cordial and civil. Uh, and we now will take a 10-minute recess, 10-minute recess.
I can't believe every. I'm wide awake now. Are you kidding? You give Jeff off?
Hey Doug, are we going to get to the Kirkwood discussion tonight?
On a more important note, Alex, did you get a haircut?
That's real important, yes.
It looks great.
Oh, thank you.
Can you capture the chat on this? I, I just sent you a text.
Uh.
I, I think there's a way to at the end.
I think it automatically captures at the end.
Yeah, a lot of comments on the pickleball stuff I didn't get, so.
Yeah, I'll make sure I do that.
Great, thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, the board members are here, so, uh, I call this meeting back to order. And the next item on our agenda, 3C, is audited financial statement. Who wants to start this? Doug or Larry? Doug? You're muted.
I'll let Larry introduce John.
Okay.
I'll let John take it over.
Go ahead.
All right. So, um, recently, within the last couple of weeks, we finished our, uh, finding, our audit of, of our financial position. And it was done by Bron Sheridan, uh, Ron Schultz, Sheridan and Fritz. I always, I always just call them Ron Fritz, but it's Ron Sher- Schultz, Sheridan and Fritz. And with us is John Bonowitz. He's a partner with, uh, VSSF. So he will present the financial statements and he or I will answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thanks Larry and good evening, everyone. So just a, a couple of things that I wanted to go through as far as the, uh, the audit goes for, um, the year ended 12/31/20. The, the first item being what, what we refer to as our responsibility letter. So this is, this is our responsibility to communicate certain things to you as the township supervisors that pertain to the audit. And our responsibility as part of the audit is to express an opinion on the financial statements. An other, and it's actually Alex, the three-page letter or four-page letter is where, where I'm starting, which is a different document. I don't even know if that was, was part of the, the, uh, the handouts.
Yeah, it was not part of the handouts.
Okay, so, so this is, this is really just, um, just a communication. So, um, another responsibility that we have is to look at the internal control structure of the township. And we do that in order to assess the risk that may arise as part of determining what our audit procedure should be. And in essence, we give a report because of the fact that the township got federal money this year. So there's an, an actual report on the internal control structure of the township this year. And I'll, I'll get to that in just a second. Other items as far as the communication, uh, we felt that we were independent from the township as, as we went through the audit and throughout the year, there is a summary of the significant accounting policies that are adopted by the township. That's included in note one to the financial statements. There are accounting estimates that are part of the financial statements. The most sensitive accounting estimates would be obviously the pension obligation or the, in the case of this year, the pension asset. The estimated useful lives of the capital assets that the township has recorded as its, its fixed capital assets. And then the allocation of depreciation expense and revenue amounts on the statement of activities. Other items, we encountered no difficulties in dealing with management as we went through our audit. All of the journal entries that we proposed to Larry were recorded in the, in the accounting records or in, and are included in the financial statements. We had no disagreements with management as we went through our audit. We were not aware of any consultations with other accountants. And as far as the supplemental information and the required supplemental information, we performed different procedures on those, but basically comparing them to other information that we, we were made aware of in the financial statements in order to determine that they're reasonable. So that's the required communication. So just to kind of briefly run through the financial statements and, and this will be very high level, really just pointing out a couple of things that, that you as the, the supervisors should look at and read, et cetera. But first thing being the auditor's report. So the auditor's report starts out with management's responsibility and that's to prepare and, and present the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on the financial statements. And that opinion is that they do, do represent, um, or are, are, um, are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or in other words, a clean opinion on the financial statements. So one other thing that I wanted to point out as far as the, uh, the report this year, because like I mentioned, the township received federal money and, and spent like a million two in federal money. We were required to, to issue two additional reports and they're part of what we call the single audit. One being a report dealing with the federal program monies that were spent. And another report being just the financial statement, uh, presentation and accounting that the township does, uh, just in general. So those are two additional reports and I'll get to those in just a second. So included in the financial statements are management's discussion and analysis. Um, and, and that's really pages four, all the way back to page 13. Really, the, the items that management feels are important for the reader to kind of get a feel for what happened during the year. I, I always like to, to just point those out to boards just to say, this is the stuff that you should be looking at. For instance, there on page five, the fact that the township has $7.5 million in debt. There, there are guarantees on some other intermunicipal loans. So that's, um, items on page five, items on page six that I think are, are, uh, just important. The Valley Vista Drive Bike Path Project was funded with federal money. That's being pointed out. And the fact that there, there are other grants that are being made available to the township, the, uh, second and third bullets there. So on page nine, and, and this is really looking at the township as a whole. So not just the general fund that, that you're, you're probably used to talking about and hearing about, but all of the funds except for the pension funds. So including the fixed assets, the capital assets, including the debt, which includes uh, deferred inflows pertaining to the pension. Like I mentioned, this year it is a pension asset. Last year it was a pension liability. So going in the right direction. And then the other thing, the, the other table, um, is on page 11. And this is the income statement for the governmental activity. So all of the funds combined together. Again, general fund, all the special revenue funds, the capital project funds. And that shows an increase in net position of $1.8 million for the year. There is discussion about the fund side of the financial statements beginning on page 12. And the one thing that I wanted to point out, um, just as far as numbers go. So the general fund for the current year used about $600,000 of fund balance. So there was a decrease in fund balance of about $600,000. Or in essence, about half of what it was at the beginning of the year. So, so coming out of 2020, there was 600 and about $60,000 of general fund, fund balance left. On page 14, the capital assets that I mentioned, um, making up about 26, almost 27 million dollars for the township. And then on page 15, a discussion about the long-term debt, including the compensated absences. So you, you see the, the total debt about 8.3 million dollars. And then the, the last item there, economic factors in next year's budgets. Basically, a, a, a very short discussion and it is, um, expanded in the footnotes to the financial statements, but the fact that there was money that was allocated to the township as part of the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. And that was about $1.5 million for the township to spend. So the next item that I wanted to talk to, rather than actually looking at the financial statements. the next item that I wanted to talk to, rather than actually looking at the financial statements page by page or the footnotes. Like I mentioned, it was a year where there was a single audit. That was the result of federal funding that was received by the township. So the additional financial statement pages, the additional work that we needed to do in order to audit those federal awards begins on page sixty-three of the financial statements. And basically, it's a schedule of expenditures of federal awards showing the money that was spent. And then a couple of additional reports, like I mentioned. The first one being the report on internal control and compliance at the entity level. And our report basically saying we did not find anything wrong on on the internal control side or the compliance side at the entity level. So that's the the financial reporting that that Larry's responsible for. And then the second other report that we issued deals with the federal program. And again, looking at internal control and then compliance. So the the first item being an opinion on compliance. And it is a clean opinion that we didn't find anything wrong from a compliance standpoint as far as the monies that were spent for the federal award or how they were spent. We did identify a weakness in internal control over compliance that we identified on the next to last page, basically. And and that was really just saying that management was not aware that the grant funds that were being used for the bike path were federal funding. So all of the rules and regulations that needed to be followed were followed because in essence, they were part of the contract. But it wasn't identified to us as federal funding, basically until after the audit. So we recommended that that Larry and his team should come up with a a procedure in order to address that. And they gave us a response, Larry gave us a response, basically saying that there is now a procedure in place where anytime the township is getting grant funding, it will it will run through the finance director so that he can determine whether it should be recorded as federal funding or not. So that's a a very high-level synopsis of the audit. But again, it was it was a good audit from our standpoint. We appreciate the work that Larry does in getting ready for us. And we appreciate being being a selected as auditor for the township for the number of years that we have. Does anybody have any questions?
Board members, any questions? No, doesn't look like it. Thank you very much, John.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, good job, Larry. Okay, seeing there are no questions from the board or comments. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Number four, public safety, special events permit from Central Pennsylvania Fourth Fest. Doug, you start? You want to start this? Doug?
Sorry. Fourth Fest is still operating in pandemic mode. Remember, last year they did a presentation that involved four displays at separate areas around the region. I don't believe, I don't see anybody on here from Fourth Fest. That's for pitch hitting form, chief. This year, they're they're doing a modified show. They're going to do two displays, one on this end of town and the other one on the other end of town. In College Township, both sites are more or less in the vicinity of I ninety-nine or three twenty-two bypass. Again, they've they've agreed to follow the procedures we followed last year. In that matter, we had designated Chief Jolly as the township's representative. And he'd worked with them to make sure that they had all their permits and in place and all the approvals they needed. We had included in the agenda materials a list of items that we're asking them to provide. Chief Jolly will check down through that and make sure everything's included. We wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to ask questions or voice concerns that they might have. Now, look, at this point, Chief Jolly, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Ah, no, I'm happy to act as our liaison again with the Fourth Fest. And yeah, we I provided the list of everything that was required of the Fourth Fest last year. So we'll scramble to get all these put back together. So hopefully, we can pull this off in time to to have a show on the fourth.
Okay. Chief, I have a question. What about last year? What what's your, what was our experience with having these fireworks set off behind Wegmans?
Yeah, so we did have a location here last year in in Patent Township. And and the biggest concern that we had was with traffic. With the pandemic, really at the height of the pandemic last year during this show, we didn't have as much traffic concerns. We we were ready, we had additional staffing to help with any traffic concerns. And that that will be the same this year. We'll continue to have additional staffing ready and close down a couple of different streets to make sure that we don't have any any concern with that. We also worked with the Pennsylvania State Police last year as well for any issues out on the interstate. Traffic would be the main concern, but we'll we'll have staffing ready to go to deal with it.
Great, thanks, chief. Anita, go ahead.
Yeah, I noticed that it said that it's hope most residents will be able to enjoy the displays from somewhere in their neighborhood. That's a little vague. And I'm wondering, last year I checked out over by Target and that that full parking lot. I mean, it was quite the the festive parking lot. How do you, do you think residents are just going to step outside their house and look to the skies? Or are you, is the committee expecting that word of mouth is going to get around and people are going to congregate in different places? Yeah. Okay.
They're sensitive to. They would like to keep the locations confidential so people don't congregate close to them and create tra- traffic issues. We'll ask them that question. I would say for Patent Township residents, if you look towards the same area that you saw them last year, you'd probably be able to get a get a look.
Yeah.
If there's trees in your yard, you probably have to go somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up on that. We, my wife and I were a little concerned about the possibility of traffic congestion in in around that area where they were set off in our township. So we watched from Circleville Park. And we could see them fine, and it was pretty far away, looked pretty far away. But the the side benefit is we could also look over to our to the south and also see some fireworks displays in the Ferguson Township area. And even, no, actually, no, we couldn't see the College Township ones from where. But we saw two fireworks from two directions from Circleville Park. And there was even a local group that set off some fireworks in Circleville Park. So I know there was a patrol, there was a, I know. There was a township police officer on the scene and he went over and had a chat with them. I don't know what the outcome was, but they that those fireworks subsided at that point. They didn't come up again. Any other comments or questions? Do we need to vote on this, Larry, Doug?
Yeah, just if you board take quick action to endorse the proposal and authorize Chief Jolly to be our representative.
Someone wish to present that motion for the board?
So move, Pam, Rob.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, sorry.
Both of you.
Elliot.
They were too soon. All right, moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, let's have a vote. If you say aye, if you agree, aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All all voted in favor, so the motion passes. Thank you, chief. Actually, I think you're next. No, you're not. Noise waiver application, RE Farm Cafe. Doug, go ahead.
Yeah, this is the first for RE Farm Cafe. They've applied for a noise waiver for a series of events they have planned over the summer, primarily on Thursdays and weekends. They're asking for permission to provide amplified music between six and eight thirty on Thursdays, one and nine on Saturdays and Sundays. They're here with us. If you or Monica want to turn your video on and why don't you? Hi there, nice to see you. Why don't you, if you can provide some more information for the board? And then we'll consider the issue and see if there's any other information the board like.
Sure, we'd be happy to give you more information. Thank you for the time. On Thursday nights, we have a picnic that people come in, get a picnic dinner and sit out on the back lawn behind the cafe. The cafe is in the very center of the fifty-seven acre property. So the music would be during picnic night. And we would, it would be at a level where people would still be able to have conversations within their group during the picnic. On Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we have various people booked weddings. On Saturday's afternoons, we sometimes have an ice cream social. We have like a group that is a teacher who teaches cello lessons wants to have her cello recital there, so for her students. And we thought we'd ask them to stay and play for the ice cream social. And then for various weddings and would have, potentially would like to have music for some dancing time after the wedding. And then the other thing would be church groups. We had churches ask us to have their services outdoors. And so that would be, they would have music involved with that. Those are generally the situations that we're looking at.
Okay.
Can I clarify anything else? I'd be happy to.
Yeah, thank you. Board members? Anita, go ahead.
Hi, I know you are really respectful of your neighbors and you have beautiful property. Our church had its Easter service there and I thank you for that. My question is, because this seems to be auditory nose noise night. And I don't understand how sound travels. But I was taking a drive out your way. And I see there are new houses that have been developed across the road from you and they're kind of up on a hill. I don't, the fact that you're asking for a waiver would suggest that the noise is something that requires a waiver. And I'm just wondering, and I I checked with Doug, we don't really have a policy on whether neighbors should be contacted to let them know that a noise waiver has been applied for. And I'm sure it'll just be fine, but given the discussion we've just gone through on a different noise issue, I'm wondering if there would be a way to, for the township to just notify those neighbors. I think as far, I've sent some pictures and I don't know if Alex wants to show them or that it's across the street, the the new houses that are going up there that are kind of the closest in, if they should just be notified that maybe that the township has granted a noise waiver. And if there's any problems, they should let us know. I doubt that there will be.
Yeah, we could reach out to them in the next week or so and get information back. I mean, I, we contact everybody, all the surrounding properties. There's a couple of homes in Patent Town, Patent Township side of the road, too, that we'd we'd go ahead and contact if you want to do that. I'd suggest, if you're interested in getting the neighbors' feedback, I'd suggest that we do that before we issue the the permit at this point.
You know, and I know you're going to want to move ahead on it. You've got wonderful events planned. Could we grant approval pending? You know, no, no red flags that come from a survey next week or so. So we go ahead, so you can start having your events. But I think as the township, we just now ought to be really cautious about having, you know, identified potential people who might speak up about noise.
Okay. Just that in our logo, re, part of our logo is respect and and we certainly have respect for all our neighbors. And and we've most of the of the music that we have is not amplified. You know, it's a single guitarist or it's a a speaker for a church service, you know, with very mild music. So but we're just, you know, trying to be cautious to make sure that the winds do funny things at Windswept Farm. And and, you know, I'm sure that there are times that that some of the neighbors might hear some sounds. But it you know, so we need, we do need to be cautious. And certainly we respect your willingness to be cautious as well.
Well, I would move approval, what what is the official thing? Approval of the waiver with a note that neighbors will be contacted in the next week or so. And, you know, if we receive any complaints or something, then we can revisit it. Does that, does that sound reasonable then for a motion?
Yeah, so basically you're moving approval with with a contingency.
Yes.
That af- after neighbors are contacted, we don't receive some kinds of negative responses that we'll have to revisit.
Yeah.
Okay, it's seconded, looks like Elliot has his hand raised. So Elliot seconded. Any further discussion? Seen none, let's move, let's move, go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimous, Doug, so motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Monica and Duke.
Thank you.
Next, agenda item, Chief Jolly's back up here for the April police report. Go ahead, chief.
Hi, thank you. Got a copy of my report in with the agenda materials. April saw one hundred and thirty-seven traffic stops, twenty-six sites, one parking ticket and eleven criminal arrests. Bike patrol again was busy, eighty-eight miles, two hundred and twenty-nine business checks, four incidents, including a drug arrest and two vacation home checks. We had a male arrested for possession of heroin and methamphetamine as a result of a traffic stop, which with a vehicle that's shown displaying an expired registration sticker. Female who was arrested for theft by deception and receiving stolen property. She worked as a cashier at a local business and she was making fraudulent returns for gift cards and then subsequently using those gift cards to make purchases at the store. Thirty-eight-year-old male was cited for public drunkenness and disearly conduct. He was intoxicated, being rude, loud and making inappropriate comments to staff at a township hotel. There were no DUI arrests made in the month of April. We did serve eight of the seventeen warrants that we attempted and our officers conducted eleven vacation home checks. We did use force during one incident in April of twenty twenty-one. Our officers were attempting to serve a three oh two mental health warrant on an individual. As officers made contact with the male, he passively pulled away from the officers and kind of became verbally confrontational with them. The officers verbally deescalated the individual, who eventually did calm down. However, the officer decided to disengage with the individual and not push the issue that night. And the individual did subsequently turn himself into the hospital the following day. So it was, the officers did a fantastic job of dealing with that individual in a volatile situation. Community relations, Officer Tuskovich spoke with parents at the Park Forest Middle School, I'm sorry, elementary school via Zoom about children's internet safety. He spoke to Mrs. Packers, seventh and eighth grade, Park Forest Middle School academic literacy classes about unsolved center county cases. Spoke with Ms. Brennan's eighth grade, Park Forest Middle School Social Studies class about the juvenile justice system. Sergeant Albright participated in a drug takeback event at Wegmans on April twenty-fourth. There, we collected a total of thirty-six point five pounds of unwanted and unused medications. And just as a reminder to everybody, the drug takeback box is available in the township office Monday through Friday during normal business hours. You can feel free to come bring in any of your unwanted and unused medications. uh, any of your unwanted and unused medications. Also a reminder for the community, uh, with the election coming up less than a week away here, uh, there is a ballot box, uh, so we do have it right outside of the main entrance. Uh, so you can feel free, uh, if you are choosing to, uh, to bring in and to use the ballot box, uh, we do have one of those at the main interest of the township building. Uh, some of the department activities in April, our officers attended tactical response team training, a Glock armor training, uh, a car seat technician update training, and then I attended trainings on policing communities of color, uh, on three separate occasions. A webinar on police training and decision-making, a webinar on Act Fifty-seven, and Act Fifty-seven is a new act that requires MOPAC uh, to develop a database, uh, to hold separation records, uh, for all law enforcement officers in the Commonwealth and requires our agencies to do a very thorough background check, but to check with this database, um, prior to hiring an individual to make sure uh, there's nothing in their background or in their past from previous agencies that, uh, we should be aware of. Um, I also wanted to, uh, I'm sorry, the, uh, I also attended the Patent Township Business Association meeting, the Center County Chiefs of Police meeting, the campus community unity meeting and a center region emergency services meeting. Uh, this week I did want to note, uh, is National Police Week. Uh, we did post a tribute, uh, that was done, uh, with the coordination of Center County Law Enforcement. Uh, there was a total of three hundred and sixty-two officers who died in the line of duty in, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, so like I said, that, that tribute is on our first Facebook page and, uh, it's, it's definitely worth a, a look if you have the, have a moment to, to look into that. Um, did also want to mention that we started conducting our listening sessions on our deadly force, uh, discussions. Uh, we actually had one at two o'clock today. It was very well attended and we had a very good conversation. Uh, we will be conducting the second one tomorrow at five PM and I believe that there is still time to register. Uh, they can go onto the township website, I believe, to register for, for that. Is that correct Doug? On the website? Okay, all right. Uh, so again, with some of our, uh, notes that we've received from the community, uh, the first is a photo of Sergeant Albright there at the Wegmans event. That's, uh, from the drug takeback event that we had on the twenty-fourth. Uh, next page is, uh, three separates, uh, little notes that I'd received from members of the community. First one, uh, just thanking our officers for helping cross students over to the Circleville Park. Uh, it's obviously a very busy roadway there at Valley Vista. Uh, the new rapid, uh, crossing is very, uh, very nice and helpful, but our officers, uh, helped out by stopping traffic for a large group of children to get across. Uh, second one was from a, uh, individual who just happened to be behind one of our cars as they were able to, uh, stop and, and help out a stray dog who was, uh, kind of walking along the roadway. This again was also on Valley Vista Drive and they actually captured it on their dash cam and provided us with the video. Uh, but we're thanking the officer for his compassion and professionalism and then also a letter from an individual who suffered a vehicle fire at Sheetz and they were just helpful for, again, for the response. And commented that they're so grateful to live in a community that keeps each other safe. Also received another letter from a ambulance assist, uh, just talking about the professionalism, uh, caring thoughtfulness, um, while helping out the patient. Uh, expressed gratitude for the professionalism, caring attitude, and I thought it was a nice, I was, Officer McElrath, it said, please know that you have amazing officers that represent Patent Township and I feel that Officer McElrath went above and beyond what I would consider to be what is expected out of a normal ambulance call, transport, and it did not go under. So very nice, uh, letters that we had received this month. We also did have a performance report on the tenth of April. Officer Schaefer responded to an address uh, for an unresponsive male who had recently smoked Percocet. When he arrived, he determined that the male was actually in advanced stages of an opioid overdose. Uh, he did administer naloxone and performed a sternal rub. The male quickly recovered, at which point EMS arrived to take over treatment and transport him to the hospital. So a fantastic job, uh, reviving the individual with the, uh, the use of naloxone. Uh, the record list for our calls for service, uh, for the month of April, so we had four hundred and eighteen calls, that's up from the three hundred and eighty-nine we had in March. Uh, the most frequent call for service was traffic. We had ninety-two traffic incidents and followed up, uh, by health and safety EMS assists, uh, where we had fifty-one. I just wanted to make note as well, it started to see our ordinance violations, actually right there on the page you just had, Alex. We're seeing a little bit more activity, um, with the grass season upon us. Our ordinance enforcement officer is out and very active. Um, so just be sure, uh, that you are cutting your grass and we have no growth over six inches. Uh, the one last thing that I actually added now, um, again, trying to help, uh, with the community to be as transparent as we possibly can. Um, I did include the arrest distribution reports for the first four months of the year. Um, there's three different reports. The first one is all of our arrests and it breaks them down by the offense and then the first one is by gender. Uh, so you see we had forty-eight total arrests, thirty-four were male, fourteen were, uh, female. The second one breaks it down by race, uh, again, by the offenses and then races, uh, for the forty-eight that we had, thirty-nine were white, six black or African-American and three were Asian. And then lastly, it breaks it down by, uh, their ethnicity. Uh, so out of the forty-eight, uh, two were Hispanic or Latino and forty-six were not Hispanic or Latino. Um, so I will continue to provide these stats to you. Um, I guess probably maybe every three months or so, I'll include these with my report, uh, just so you can see where we're at, um, with our arrests and with that information, I thought it was important to share. I'd be happy to answer any questions or anything that you might have.
Okay, uh, question, uh, seemed, uh, Mr. Payne has his hands raised. Go ahead, Jim.
Hi, Chief. Couple of comments. First of all is Patton Township does a great job with the police department. Next comment, last Friday, with all the traffic coming into town, Penn State move out and graduations, Patton Crossing had the right lane of Atherton closed off. Are they doing a good job at informing you?
I, I think that's a question for our manager since he.
Okay.
No, and I, I mean, that's comes under Penn Dot's ruling. I couldn't tell you. They, that, as far as I know, we didn't get a notice. So, and whether they're required to notify us or not, I'd have to go back and look at their permit.
Okay, well, I just thought that was pretty ignorant time to shut down a lane. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Payne. Uh, Anita, go ahead.
Yes, I, and I think they were shut down again today for a one-lane or it would be helpful just as community courtesy if, you know, they would let us know, but I understand maybe they're not required to. Uh, the point I had, and I know we've got a long meeting, but as I looked at the police report and I've talked with the chief about this, there were fourteen times that the police were called for illegal left turns at Chick-fil-A, um, and issued, uh, warnings. And I understand that we're not ticketing because the, they're mostly out of town people or visitors, um, but fourteen times in April and another six times that traffic was backed up. Though those are the legal right turn folk, um, but there were, I counted four other times where the police report said they had to clear out a number of vehicles. So they're actually piling up. Again, I don't know that, um, what we can do, although I, um, my husband noted that Google Maps is directing people to make the illegal left turn and so does the Chick-fil-A website. I think at the very least, they can put a notice on their website and talk to Google Maps so that people who are trying to get there and they look on their phone and they come right up. But I'm feeling that this is such a broken record and the community keeps, you know, people talk to me about, why can't we do anything? I'd like to suggest the supervisors write a letter to the management at Chick-fil-A to express our deep concern about this ongoing traffic consideration. And it's no criticism of our police. Our police are doing admirable work. I'm frustrated that our police resources are tied up with this and I don't know if we have any suggestions for the Chick-fil-A people, if there's something they should be lobbying for with national or, but, you know, fourteen times in the month of April, that's like every other day. And another three or four where it's group left turns and there's going to be a serious accident there. You just know it. You're just waiting for the shoe to fall. But beyond that, even on the legal right turns, people are stopped on the highway, almost all the way back to the colonnade stoplight. And so then other people have to switch lanes. If they're coming up behind them, they have to switch into the left lane. There's got to be something, and if not, just to tell the community that we're as frustrated as they are. But I'd like to suggest that it's time for the supervisors to write a letter. Thank you.
Any other comments or response to Anita's proposal? Uh, Elliot, go ahead.
I agree completely. I think something has to be done there. Um, there's got to be a way to speed up the service there. And that seems to be a problem and the company doesn't seem to be willing to do that. And so everyone else in the community has to suffer.
Any other supervisors wish to comment? Anita, could you draft a letter for us?
I will. I'll talk to each of you individually so as not to be violating the sunshine law and get your input and I will draft a letter.
Okay, so we can review it in two weeks at our next board meeting. Okay.
Yeah, I guess that would be the, the proper way to do it.
All right. Any other questions or comments for Chief Jolly? Uh, good job as usual, Chief. Thank you very much for all the excellent work your, you and your department does. Next item is number five, Public Works, uh, project update on the Cricklewood Traffic Calming.
This will be Alex.
Hello.
Alex, go ahead.
Hi, um, this is just an update, uh, on the Cricklewood Traffic Calming. Uh, the process started back in January twenty twenty. Uh, back then, the eighty-fifth percentile speed was measured to be forty-one miles an hour. Um, so, uh, you can read through the progression of it or the iterations we've been through. So we installed the Painted Islands back in the fall of twenty twenty and wanted to share with you that the data now shows that the eighty-fifth percentile speed has been reduced from forty-one miles an hour to thirty-four miles an hour down near the Cooper's Pond rental office and down to thirty-six miles an hour near Barclay Lane intersection. Um, we, these results are great. Um, we're glad to see the reduction in speed. Um, however, um, we spoke to Mr. Phil Park and he noted that even though we've seen a reduction, there's cer- the thirty-six miles an hour is still eleven miles an hour over the speed limit. So, um, I put, I put out a survey to ask residents, um, how they feel about lengthening the islands to see if that would, perhaps also reduce speeds further. In the agenda is the, the map showing the four island locations. So I'm proposing to lengthen islands three and four. And this is the survey that was sent to residents of the neighborhood yesterday. And then this is a letter we received from Phil today. So this is just for your information, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thanks.
Phil's with us. Did you have some comments you'd like to share, Phil?
Uh, I'd only like to say, after eighteen years on the board, I sympathize with what you people are doing, going through. Uh, but I'd also like to point out that almost every item that you've talked about tonight is either quality of life in the neighborhood or traffic. And in this case, we're talking about both in the same ball of wax. I appreciate all that Doug and, uh, Alex have done with us. I would argue that you don't need a community survey to endorse lengthening the islands. The islands are in, they have demonstrated that they have any effect. And if you lengthen the islands, I believe it will further reduce the speed. And I'd also like to highlight my final request in there, that there be an increased police presence in the area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Park. Uh, comments or from the board? Questions from the board?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to raise, raise my hand.
Go ahead.
Just a procedural question. Do we need to survey the public to lengthen the islands? Is that just a public relations process or, uh, you know, to have the survey?
There's no requirement, but we surveyed them every step along the way. We felt like we didn't want to do anything without giving them notice and asking what their opinion was.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
I said, I was just going to say, I guess I should have added that we did receive a handful of people complaining about, um, pedestrians complaining about walkability through the island areas. So that was another question in the survey, asking, um, do you want to keep the islands? Even, you know, knowing that they help reduce speeds, but that was just another thing I wanted to point out.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Phil, go ahead.
I understand that you're only going to hear the complaints. You seldom hear the praise. But the fact is, if you think just about the streets in Park Forest Village, which aside from Devonshire Drive where you could drive an ICBM down the street and we've had our own problems there, the rest of them are twenty-seven feet and they allow parking on both sides. And that physical location of cars parked on the street forces traffic to slow. And I believe that the same effect will show up if you lengthen the islands and force people instead of just aiming for a, a, a slight jog in their direction with the islands that are there now, but you force them to navigate by lengthening the islands. At the same time, they have to be conscious of the people who are walking along there. And, you know, I admit, I, I, I've said before, I was part of the problem. We said toff trees could go, get away with no sidewalks. But if you lengthen the islands, it will force drivers to be more attentive when there's somebody in that walkway.
Right, thank you. Any other board members have questions or comments? Okay, Alex, I think, uh, we've been duly notified. And, uh, so I assume we'll expect some further reports after there, that you get the community survey completed and, and probably expand a little.
Yes.
Medium lanes, okay. All right, moving on, uh, number seven, administration, intergovernmental cooperation. Request to form a cent, a center county human relations commission. Doug, are you going to start this one?
Yeah, this is mine. Um, we've had a request from, uh, actually it was on Ferguson Township letterhead, but it comes from Ferguson Township State College Borough in Bellefonte Borough. They'd been talking over the last, uh, year or so about forming a joint human relations commission. They wanted to expand that. They've reached out to Patton Township and College Township, uh, asking if there's interest in forming a, what would be called a center county human relations commission. A human relations commissions, uh, is authorized by the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. There is a state-level human relations commission. But local communities can also form their own if they'd like. Uh, as stated in the letter, the primary purpose of the commission would be to prohibit discrimination in housing, employment and public accommodations based on race, color, religion, age, ancestry, national origin, sex, sexual org- sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, source of income, disability or handicap, presence of a service animal, pregnancy, marital or family status or family responsibility. Currently, as I noted, all those are, are, not all those, but most of those protected by state law and they, uh, persons who are, think they've been discriminated in housing, employment and public accommodations could appeal to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. Uh, at the local level, uh, we would be adding sexual orientation and a gender identity expression to the list of things that, that are, are covered. As I noted, this is just an introduction to see what questions or comments you might have. Ultimately, you know, the question tonight is, would you like to proceed forward or not proceed forward? There would be a lot of ultimately to adopt or to form this local or this countywide commission. The township would have to adopt a non-discrimination ordinance. State College Borough has one already. It would closely parallel state law. Ultimately, we would enter into an inter-municipal agreement with the other participating municipalities. And then there'd be some other memorandums of understanding that we would enter into with these other agencies and the agency would probably enter into an agreement with the state human relations commissions on jurisdiction. So as I noted today, this is an introduction, ask the board for, you know, what, do you have questions? We can bring folks in at a future meeting to provide more information. State College Borough currently has a commission. When we eventually do form a commission, there'll be a financial commitment. We'll have to identify that. It probably, you know, would not kick in until twenty twenty-two. But again, introduction and see if there's any questions or comments.
Okay, Elliot, go ahead.
I've yet to hear a complaint about, from anybody saying that we're too fair to each other and that we're too good to each other and that we get along too well and that we should stop it. So I think we should join this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Anita, go ahead. You're muted. Anita, you're unmute yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with Elliot. I support it. My question is, what would the process be for identifying the person from Patton Township who would serve on the commission? Is there, maybe that's the question asked.
To be determined.
Okay. If it would be a citizen or would it be someone serving on the board? Or, I mean, we're citizens too, but so would the board be determining the process for who to appoint?
That would be my assumption, but I couldn't give you any more details than that.
Okay, well, I think it's a terrific idea. Thank you.
Betsy, you raise your hand.
It was Anita's question.
I'm sorry?
I had the same question.
Okay, okay, same question. All right, Pam, go ahead.
I agree with Anita. The only question I would have is the financial aspect of it. Could we bring someone in so Larry would have some kind of idea of how much it would cost for our township to be a part of this?
Yeah, we would get an estimate together, probably, I mean, before we go to budget time, so.
Hey, I had a question. On the letter you got from Dave Prigulka into the second paragraph where it says "Commission would be responsible for adjudicating complaints and determining whether violations exist." My question is, I'm assuming this human relations commission would not have any enforcement power. So in that case, what happens after a complaint is adjudicated? And, you know, where would this go? Would this be referred to the police or, you know?
No, these are civil issues, not criminal issues. And not hate crimes. These are discrimination in housing, employment and public accommodation. I believe their first, they first try to mediate the issue, but that'll, I'll get more information on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would want more information on the process that HRC follows. Oh, Betsy Dupuy.
And then finding, I'll get more information. I know mediation is always the first step.
Okay, Betsy Dupuy has a response. Go ahead, Betsy.
So essentially, this becomes, if you set this up the way the boroughs is structured, which is common, it becomes a local agency human relations commission. So a person in your township would have to start there first, then go to the human relations commission. And at that point, and for those of you that aren't aware, the Human Relations Commission in Pennsylvania and the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, the EEOC, run hand in hand and they have various requirements. They become, they're administrative processes that you have to go to first before you can then sue in federal court. That's, so typically, these are stepping stones for persons who are actually discriminated against. I mean, a lot of people don't go this far, right? Because they don't want to get into a legal dispute. But if they do, they have to go through these administrative processes before they can proceed with any action in court. So, you know, I think it'd be good to talk to the borough about the success of this or not. And I say or not because I actually know that my former partner, Amy Marshall, had a case in which the lawyers involved were not as familiar with the State College Borough ordinance. That process didn't get handled as well and it ultimately ends up in court. And keeping in mind that many of the people who take on these cases for employees are not going to be local. They're going to be from out of town. There are some local attorneys that do this work, but it tends to be something that is, there are specific law firms that do these kind of cases and take on these activities. So I'd like to know the success the borough has had in their process. And if there are any changes they would make to what they've done to bring this, you know, to make it more successful in getting, because quite honestly, I think you're going to find they haven't had that many complaints. Most people have gone directly to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and the EEOC, and they've not used the local process. And so to Doug's point, if there's a mediation component that we also think is very valuable because it might resolve some issues without going further, it would be worth it to know what we need to do to make this become a used program and not something that we simply put on the books and doesn't get a lot of, got a lot of action.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'm assuming, I think, that the board wishes Doug to go ahead and proceed with with, you know, finding out the information of the questions we've asked and also with the idea that we are tentatively looking to join such a collaborative effort. Is that my, is my sense correct? I see a thumb raised. Yep, okay, got you. You mentioned orders. Next item, seven B Cooperative, Corporation Agreement for State Grant for Patent Crossing for Roadway Improvements. Doug, go ahead.
Yes, we entered into one of these with Abington Equine Hospital for the grant they received. Again, we've received, we've been notified, there were recipients of one point five million dollar grant. The agreement, Betsy has finished her review. I did send it over to the Patent Crossing folks. They have a couple very minor changes they want to make. I haven't had a chance to get them back to Betsy for that. But I would ask that the board consider action to approve, conditionally approve this pending the solicitor's final review and then authorize the chair to find, to sign the cooperation agreement.
I will entertain a motion to that effect. Okay, Betsy Whitman raised her hand, so she moves. And Elliot Abrams raised his hand, so he seconds discussion. Anita, go ahead.
Yeah, not on this. I'd like to bring back the patent crossing road closure issue, but perhaps after the vote. I'm supporting this agreement.
Okay.
Before we move on afterwards, I have a comment.
Okay, I will do that, but let's finish the vote. No more discussion on this motion. So all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Okay, everybody voted yes, so motion passes unanimously. All right, Anita, go ahead.
Yeah, thinking a little more about the one lane in front of patent crossing. Is there a way, I mean, the public should be notified more if there's going to be long-term closures or even, not that they can find any other way to get into town because Atherton is kind of the bottleneck, but some people might find different ways to get to town. I'm concerned that patent crossing keeps, you know, closing the road maybe longer than they need to without notice. Is there any way we can request in a more formal sense that they notify us? That we may notify the public. You could even put something up on the website to say, check our website for current closings or whatever, so people don't get stuck. There's summers coming and tempers are going to rise along with the temperature. Thank you.
Well, under this grant agreement, we'll be the contracting authority and we'll have control over those closed, those lane things. Okay. So in that respect, we'll be the ones responsible, so.
Oh, lucky us. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this one? If not, let's move on. Seven C American Rescue Plan Update, Doug? Or is this Larry?
No, this is me.
Okay.
Larry can chime in. Larry will tell me, probably tell me I'm promising too much or something. Just providing you some information, the guidance from US Treasury did come out on Monday. That was included with the update. I will tell you, the guidance that US Treasury issued was not nearly as expansive as the folks in the National League of Cities thought. It's been crafted much more narrowly to be in line with those bullet points that came out of the legislation. I also did provide from the Government Finance Office or Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. Their main guidance is take your time. In that vein, I did provide a preliminary schedule of going out and getting input from the stakeholders in this process. Those stakeholders would include not only the Board of Supervisors, but township staff and our ABCs, our partner agencies that we work with, COG, CAT, ACNET and others. And then also reach out broadly to the public. We would look at gathering that input between June and August and then filtering through that input, seeing what's eligible, not eligible, et cetera, what's affordable, not affordable. And go through a process of funneling that, all that input down to items that would end up in our budget for twenty twenty-two and ultimately beyond for twenty-three and twenty-four. Recall, this money's going to come in two tranches, half this year and half next year. And we do have to spend it all by the end of twenty twenty-four. If there's questions, I'll try to answer them or, but at this point, I think I just, if the board's okay with the preliminary schedule, I'll start working towards that process of getting requests for suggestions out and start the process of getting those back in. Anything you want to add, Larry?
No, you did a very good job there, Doug. You didn't promise too much.
Okay. Okay. So Doug prepared a tentative discussion schedule for this. And do any of the board members have comments or questions on his proposed schedule? Yes, Betsy, go ahead.
Procedural one or a philosophical one, whatever. Is this common when we, when a township receives federal funds?
We have received federal funds before, or at least not the last, not more than twenty-three years.
Okay.
This is, there's, there's nothing.
Well, what I'm saying, is it common then to request suggestions from the public? For this?
Last discussion we had with the board, a direction I got was to reach out broadly.
Okay, I forgot. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I remember those comments and, you know, we wanted to be transparent and open. And, yeah.
Sorry, I do remember. Thank you, Dan.
Yeah.
There, there is nothing common about this process at all. And that's why I agree with the Governor, Governors Financial Officers Association because take it slow, because things will be changing. People will be trying to do stuff and the Treasury Department will be making revenue rollings based on what people are asking or trying to do, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, seen none. We will move on to the consent agenda. Doug?
Got three items left. Item D three has been rescheduled to the next agenda. I'd ask that the board approve as presented.
What am I looking at here?
Bit of word for repairs to traffic segment toff trees, fox hollow minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Voucher report.
Right. Anybody on the board wish to pull any item for separate discussion? Showing on a tick, oh, go ahead, Betsy. Yeah.
I just move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second, Pam Robb.
All right, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Let's go to the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All, everyone approved, so the motion carries unanimously. Moving on, managers' report.
Quick, a couple pieces of correspondence. Thank you from the Chamber for Annual Donation to Center County Economic Development. Did forward the use of, or local use of radar resolution to our legislative members last week. That issue has still not been decided. At the legislative level, Tyler mentioned that we had a listening session for use of deadly force today. We filled up ninety minutes and I expect we'll do the same thing tomorrow. And we'll be giving you links to the copies of those, those sessions. And also I'll provide you a written summary also. Township office be closed on Memorial Day and on July fifth observance of Independence Day and next, next Tuesday is municipal primary election and the township is a voting location. End of my report.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions or comments for Doug? Seen none, moving on. Committee reports. Anybody who wishes to expand on reports you've already submitted? Seen none. We can move on. Other business, any additional business anyone wants to bring to the supervisors? Seen none. I'll accept the motion to adjourn. A move by Elliot, is there a second? Second by Pam Robb. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
Aye. Hallelujah.
Thank you, everyone. This has certainly been a very long meeting and I hope it sets the record and we don't have to try to break it at any further time this year.
Dan, well-run meeting.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, first part, very challenging. You roast the occasion.